Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners to order. Today is December 12th, 2023. It is 1:00. And I believe Senior Pastor Kevin Ballard of Cavalry Chapel Inverness will be giving the invocation. And then Pledge of Allegiance with our very own Air Force veteran, Madam Attorney, would you like to lead the pledge? All right. If you're willing and able to stand to join us, please do so. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas. I'll be thanking you for this glorious day that you've given us.
For the beautiful weather that we have. And Lord, we are eternally grateful that you have given us the nation in which we live, and the state in which we live, and our county in which we reside. This is all by your providence, Lord, for your divine purpose, and we are grateful for that. Lord, I pray a blessing upon the Commissioners and their families. I ask, Lord, that when they are sick, that you would heal them; when they are weak, that you would give them strength; and that when they are adjudicating the different items of business for our community, that you would give them wisdom, and that you would give them discernment. And, Lord, we're also thankful that we can serve you by serving the people of this great county. In your son's name we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's the 12th day of December, 2023. In attendance, Commission Chair Holly Davis, First Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Second Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Ruthie Schlebaugh, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise Lynn.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Howard?
Yes, there is one item, COPS grant award, which is E-16, to be added, please.
Okay, thank you. And let me take a look at this really quick. We have open to the public. We're losing one of our Commissioners at 3:30, so I need to make sure that some of these things get heard earlier on. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like some flexibility on when we hear the COPS grant, if the board would be okay with that.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda with the addition of E-16. I mean, yeah, no. Is that correct? I moved the entirety, excuse me. Got a little foggy there for a minute. Move to approve the consent. Second. I'm sorry, approval of agenda. I'm really, really sorry. Excuse me. Approval of the agenda, excuse me.
Including E-16, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, a second by Commissioner Bays. Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That was painful.
It's okay, we're with you. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
The consent agenda?
Second. I would like to pull B-2 for discussion.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Are you willing to pull B-2, Commissioner Kennard?
Pull B-2.
For discussion.
Sure. I'll modify my motion.
Okay, Commissioner Finnegan. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, B-2.
Madam Chair, this came to my attention because they were asking for a waiver of insurance, and then below it, we have two that are required to have insurance. And when I questioned it, I guess apparently at some point in time, we put an administrative regulation in place that said if the number is under 40, we don't require insurance. I don't know how you would monitor the number of 40. And second to that, if you're in the business of anything, you should always have some sort of general liability policy for everyone's protection. And particularly if you're in business, you should want that for yourself. And it doesn't really cost anymore to have us named as an additional insured, and I just think that's an appropriate method for us to follow. I think the administrative regulation needs to be brought back, and I think any time that we're going to approve someone using our facilities, they should have a general liability policy.
Well, insurance is certainly your expertise. Are you looking to potentially approve this, then bring the AR back? Or not approve this?
I would not. I would approve it with the exception that they would have to have a general liability policy. And essentially, most times, they're only $500. And I say that because I would say that a general liability policy would cover them in the event that something inside their ministry is going on, that somebody would want to make a claim against them. That would be for their own benefit as well as ours.
So is that your motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we will approve it as long as they give us the required insurance.
Madam Chair, I guess I would ask the attorney and our administrator, if our AR says less than 40, and they're saying they've got less than 40 people, then they meet the criteria. And we shouldn't be changing that on the fly.
So the AR has two provisions. It has one provision for those groups that were already using the facilities prior to the enactment of the AR change, and that was that for those organizations, they would continue. And then the next provision is for any new organizations who are less than 40, the board may, may waive the requirement. That's why it's coming before you. So it's at your discretion whether or not you want to allow the waiver or not. And so if the motion, was there a motion?
There's a motion, but no second.
Okay. So if the motion is, you certainly have the authority to deny the request for the waiver, and then if you want to change the AR, we would probably need to change two provisions of the AR, the one that allowed those existing organizations, as well as the provision that allowed for new organizations. But it is definitely permissive with "may" not "shall."
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see us stick with our AR unless at some point down the road, we're going to put it back on the agenda to address that, that if this group is telling us that they have less than 40 people, I would like to see us stick with that and grant the waiver that they're requesting.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Who monitors when they get to be 41 or 45? Or what if you have a special event and it's over that amount? How do you, I mean, that seems like a very arbitrary number, just to throw out.
They need a second on this. You need a second for discussion, so.
Thank you for interrupting. I was getting antsy.
I will second.
Second for the sake of discussion. Thank you.
That, I mean, that's my concern. I mean, what if their congregation grows? Or what if they have a special event? I mean, where's the line? How do we protect ourselves? And I just think if we're going to, you know, you've got two little leagues on here, and we're requiring that of them. So I just, I think it's just a good business practice that everybody should have to do this. I don't think it should be an arbitrary number of any amount.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, Commissioner Schlebaugh, then you.
Madam Chairman, I second to this for discussion. I have some notes here. You know, my notes are that staff probably needs to revise the AR, that I got an estimate, a ballpark about $500. I had a little bit of pain of who monitors when it becomes 41. If something happens on our property, we're liable. But I am not going to support the motion because we do have an AR in place, so it's, somebody's going to have to figure out the church or whatever when they get to 41. But we, I do think that we need to revise the AR, but this is before our AR has been revised, so we, I'm going to not support what my second is, to let's just move on, let them get the waiver, and then let's revisit this with staff and changing our AR. Because I think, I understand why we have this policy for small groups, you know, Alcoholics Anonymous, different groups that maybe perhaps can't afford that $500, but they're still on county property, and if you're going to hold one group to it, whether they're more than 40 or not, it's just an arbitrary number, and we need to protect the county buildings. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I was going to agree with Commissioner Bays, that it is an arbitrary number. And again, if we want to have an agenda item to consider changing that AR, which I would have a bit of consternation with, we can have that another day. I don't think this is the agenda item to do that with, and ultimately work towards changing that AR. But if we want to bring it back on another agenda and discuss, you know, why is it 40, not 45, or 35, or 75, you know, then we have that discussion. But in this case, like this organization is telling us they qualify because they're less than 40, I would support us granting it to them.
Okay. Any further? All right. Would anybody like to speak on this from the public?
Janet Barrett, Citrus Springs resident. First of all, the building that they're talking about is not a large building. The county has many, many larger facilities that can be rented. And if this is a new group starting out, I would tend to say they're going to probably stay under 40, but they can only rent it until September 30, 2023, when that lease runs out and they have to sign for a new one. So if they grow between now and the end of September, that's wonderful. Okay? So you're looking at a group that's starting up, they probably don't have the money for the insurance. $500 to you is nothing. $500 to me is a lot of money. $500 to a group starting out is a lot of money. So the idea, if you go to that building and see the size of it, you would see, if they get more than 40 coming, they would probably go back over to Parks and Recs and talk with Marty Ball and renegotiate a larger facility, because they're not going to want to be stuffed in a little tiny facility, you know, if they grow that much. And I was here when that AR was written up. The reason they went to 40 was because of the groups were going to get thrown out of the buildings because we didn't have insurance. There were years and years and years, none of the organizations and groups and clubs had insurance, and they rented the buildings from the county. And all of a sudden, somebody came up with the idea, oh, they need insurance. And I'm not going to say who it was, but I know who it was that came up with the idea. And it wasn't somebody on the deus. Okay? So the thing is, this should just go right on through, let the people at least start their organization, and as they grow, I'm sure they will find another building that the county has. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Anyone else from the public?
All right. Any further board discussion?
Can we restate the motion?
Yes.
Which way are we?
You want to, Corporal, restate it?
Motion to approve item B-2 as long as the required insurance is supplied.
What did she say?
I seconded it.
Yes. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion fails 1-4.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do you need a motion now to accept this agreement, B-2?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. I believe that was a motion by Commissioner Schlebaugh, sort of, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, nay? Okay, motion carries 4-1.
Madam Chairman, according to order, did you need to do public comment again?
I did.
Oh, you didn't? Nobody came, sorry.
I didn't see anybody leaving up, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
But thanks for checking on me, because it's, sometimes things slip through. Okay. C, proclamations. We have nothing, all righty? And we have a time certain at 1:20, so we have exactly four minutes for open to the public, and then we will come back to it. We are going to try a new system, which I may actually get through four minutes trying to explain this to everyone. So based on feedback, when we have very crowded meetings, people line up and they don't get to, they have to stand there for a long time when we do time certens. And so we are going to start putting numbers. You fill out a green card in advance, and there will be a number on there. I'm not going to wait around if you're not paying attention to the numbers. So this can't be a situation where your number is called, and we're waiting for every single person to dig themselves out of the crowd and come up here, because we, there's a lot of people that end up getting paid to be here, and I'm not referring to us, I'm talking about staff time and consultants and things like that. So we do try to keep an efficient meeting, but definitely make sure that everyone gets their voice heard and that they don't have to stand a long time. So now I have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak at open to the public? Going once, going twice? Okay, we got someone in motion. Pardon?
I thought we were calling numbers.
Oh, there's numbers.
You're going to call out the numbers?
Number one. I love this system already. What number, Janet had number three when she came up, but this is just for general. Okay. Would number one like to speak? Who's number one? This is going to be fun. I'm glad we're doing it at a light meeting, just to try it. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Kenneth Nichols, and I am speaking for the residents of Brentwood Assisted Living and Senior Complex. I also reside there.
Sir, do you have a letter on file with Brentwood here?
No.
Okay, so just three minutes.
Okay. I'll try to talk fast. I'm here because of our, we call the Freedom Path, which has been in existence for over two decades, and it meets the requirements as a prescriptive easement under common law and implied right of way pursuant to Florida Statute 70401, or Point 01. I have copies of that, if you'd like to see it, as Exhibit 1.
You can give it to staff afterwards.
Approximately two months ago, Brentwood HOA took it upon themselves to block this This path is used primarily by handicapped senior citizens, on wheelchairs, mobility scooters. It's about 50 yards long, and it connects in a wooded lot between New Florida Avenue in Beverly Hill subdivision and where Alpha Court crosses Brentwood. It's used for the senior citizens, including myself, to be able to get to the grocery stores, pharmacies, banks, and et cetera. The lot which we cross is also dedicated, in the original plot map, which I have a copy of also, to be used only as an emergency egress-ingress lot, because there's only one exit and entrance into Brentwood subdivision. And they've completely blocked with a mountain of large rocks, so it could never even be used now as an emergency exit. But they apparently feel that they have the right to do that, because they're fancy. It is now blocked so that it can't even be used for the purpose which it was designed to be there.
Thank you, sir. If you could send staff, someone can handle this for you, that would be great. Somebody will approach you, one of our staffers will approach you and talk to you about this. And when we do open to the public, I should have said this, we get through all open to the public, and then we respond to people. So, but in any event, we're going to start having staff intervene before, very quickly, if there's something that they need to chase down to make sure that things are being done correctly.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Sir, could you just tell me your name again, though?
Kenneth Nichols.
Thank you.
N-I-C-H-O-L-S.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, it's all yours. Number two, be ready when we're done with time certens. We're going to get through our time certens quick, and then you'll be next up.
Always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Administrator and Denise. The Clerk's office is pleased to present the internal audit, Department's audit of the EMS billing. We did this in partnership with Clifton Larson Allen. The purpose of our audit was to determine compliance with the executed contract, to determine if internal controls were adequate, verified transactions are appropriate, and accurately recorded in the accounting system, and to determine any other opportunities for improvement. We very much appreciate the professional courtesies of the Emergency Medical Services and Fire Rescue for their cooperation and assistance during the course of this engagement. As always, it is a group effort to produce quality work and verifiable work when doing an audit. And to that point, I would like to thank our Chief Audit Officer, Robin Barclay, Alice Garner, and Sheila Johnston in the Clerk's Internal Audit Division, as well as Lance Schmidt with Clifton Larson Allen in the conducting of this audit. I'd like to introduce my, do you want to start, Robin, or Lance? Okay, I'll introduce Robin Barclay, my Chief Audit Officer, to introduce Lance.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Denise, Administrator. Just to kind of give you some background on how this came to be, prior Administrator had requested after the transition from Nature Coast Mercy Medical Services to Fire Services back in '21. And '22, when they officially took over, Randy's concerns were, you know, that they were taking over the billing from, you know, Nature Coast, and there were a lot of challenges in that examination of that billing. So he felt that once Fire Services had it under their roof and the activities began, that we would then later come back and look at the billing. As you can imagine, and I'm sure Commissioner Kennard can agree, you know, medical billing is a special little animal. So we wanted to partner with a team that had the, who possessed the subject matter expertise needed to really look at the medical billing piece of it, and to look at the controls necessary to assure that the billing process from start to finish was as one would expect. So with that in mind, we partnered with CLA, with Lance Schmidt and his team, to go in and partner with Craig Stevens of Fire Services to look at these activities. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lance. He can go over his presentation to you, the results, and the positive outcomes we had from that, so.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Again, it's a pleasure to be here and present to the Commissioners the results of this audit. Just for the record, my name is Lance Schmidt. I did serve as the engagement principal over this particular internal audit. So I've got a short presentation, just to kind of keep things expedited and highly summarized. So if there's any questions, feel free to stop me at any point in time. A quick disclaimer, obviously, just recommend we look at, you look at the entire report in its entirety, not just this presentation, because there's a lot of good details in there you'll definitely want to read. So again, just the purpose of the audit, again, is look at internal controls related to EMS billing, to make sure that we've got the right controls in place. We wanted to also make sure that EMSMC was compliant with the contract that the county has in place with them, as well as following any other rules or regulations that the board has instituted. We also look at several different transactions to make sure they're properly recorded and, you know, accounted for in the system. And then lastly, if there's any opportunities for improvement, we want to make sure we communicate those as well. So we've been working on this audit since July, so I'm not going to go over all those dates in detail, but again, we're glad to be able to present this to you today. We've had a lot of back and forth, a lot of collaboration on this, and glad to report those results. So I'm going to start off with, kind of, the first thing is why. Why even do this report? As the Chief Audit Executive, Robin, had just mentioned, you know, this was kind of a secondary audit of another audit, but I want to try to just paint a little bit of a picture for you. So when we take a look at gross charges related to emergency services, we're talking about $29 million of gross charges, as you are, I'm sure you're well aware, with any time you've got any type of medical billing or medical services being provided, there are a lot of adjustments that happen from there. So our net charge number is about $14 million for the year that we looked at, which was the fiscal year 2022. Of that amount, roughly $9.2 million was collected. So we're talking about a decent amount of money that does deserve attention. And then lastly, there were over $24,000, almost nearly $25,000 calls that the county received for emergency services. So again, kind of paints the picture to say, why is this even important? Why are we even looking at this? So in summary, we did have four findings and two observations that we've got listed out in our report. You know, just to summarize all of that, you know, we know there's some discussion about moving to a different provider in the future. The recommendations that we have really are kind of vendor agnostic, and they're things that you'd want to have in place, whether it's the current provider or another provider, just making sure that, you know, the vendor is living up to the terms of the contract. And ultimately, that you're collecting as much as you can, because that's really the ultimate goal, is to run this program. Obviously, it's a critical need for the community, but it's also something that you want to maximize the collections on that, and the services being provided. And then lastly, whenever we take all of our recommendations that we've provided, it really boils down to making sure we've got the right resources, both the right people, the right processes in place, the right internal controls to make sure that, again, we are managing the program as efficiently as possible, but then also, you know, ensuring that we're providing the services that we need to citizens. And so with that, I just want to quickly recap some of the findings, and I've kind of grouped all of these. You'll see these listed out in detail in a schedule in the report, but the first one really relates to managing third-party contracts and making sure that we've got the proper policies and procedures in place, and we've got the right checks and balances, over reviewing those contracts and making sure that the vendor is doing everything that they're saying that they're supposed to do, and really living up to the terms of that agreement. The other findings that we had really revolve around collections and also the follow-up in the billing. And so it's really about making sure, you know, the vendor's providing a good faith effort in collections, that there's a tracking of any charges that have been charged and then collected, that there's good data management between. that there's good data management between any outside collection agencies, the third-party service provider that's doing the initial billing, and the county, and making sure that the data that exists between those three different parties is all seamless, captured, reviewed, supported, and there's really good understanding around that. And then lastly, anytime you're working with an outside vendors, making sure you've got the ability to get those records and there's some recourse and some teeth to make sure that you're not getting them timely, that you've got a way to get that, whether that means that you get it, you know, on a regular basis or you're getting it after the fact. And so we've talked about these at length with your Fire Chief and had great conversations about, you know, kind of what these mean and some of the recommendations. And I think the opportunity is pretty great in terms of what could be in the future with, you know, some additional controls in place. Two observations that we had, one related to the reliance and review of a statement of controls report. It's really a fancy way of saying anytime you have a third-party service provider, you don't, you know, you're not able to necessarily relinquish control. You're still responsible, whether, you know, someone else does it or you do it. But larger organizations, especially when we're talking high volumes of transactions like we are here and other third-party service providers will provide this, not all, but some will. But if they issue a statement of controls, essentially, think of that as an audit. So it means they've hired an auditor to come in there, look at their internal controls, and you've got some assurances that are being provided by that auditor that whatever they're saying they're doing, they're actually doing. And so our comment here really was just making sure you're getting that on an annual basis. There were no issues in the statement of controls report that reviewed. But you want to make sure you're getting that, reviewing that. And if there are any issues, making sure those are addressed. And/or in that report, they also tell you, this is kind of what we looked at. These are the controls we recommend on the front end, here's the controls we recommend on the back end. And it kind of helps, you know, gives you a great roadmap for making sure you have a great relationship with an outside vendor. And then lastly, we had a recommendation for an additional reconciliation of the call listing sent to the vendor just to make sure that the calls that were sent to be billed, making sure that if you send 100 calls to be billed, that when it comes back, you see that there were 100 calls that were actually billed. And just adding that reconciliation to make sure that the information provided and the information coming back all agrees. And we know that there's no lost transactions or things that maybe weren't accounted for in that process. And so with that, again, you know, the findings and observations we had really boils down to really just having the right people and the resources in place and the right processes to make sure that, you know, you're able to, again, run that program as efficiently as you need to and, you know, ensure that, you know, all funds are fully accounted for and there are no issues, so. But with that, I know I went kind of quick on that. I know you've also got the report in detail. But if there's any questions, we'd be glad to take those at this time.
Board? Nothing? Thank you. Oh, you do?
How did we jump from 21 of having 5,912 calls?
I'm sorry. In 2021, there were a number of calls for 5,912. And then 22, it went up to 24,710. And 21 is when Fire Services took over. So a large portion of that, because they, they became the EMS service provider as of, I think, October 1st. So prior to that, it was Nature Coast Emergency Medical Services.
So that's just one quarter. Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? All good? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
All right, 134, Mr. Landen?
Madam Chair, no worries. I'd just like, again, to reiterate how wonderful it's been working with Chief Stevens. He just really has his eye on the ball and is an asset to this county, and we appreciate him very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I concur. Doug? I tried to hand these to you earlier and didn't get them. Mr. Landen, you coming up? Ms. Katu?
Are the Bedwells present? I'm not sure. They're in the back. Do y'all want to speak or you want to just go ahead? Whatever you want. Sounds good. All right, this is an application for a plat vacation. They are asking to remove the drainage and utility easements lying between lots 15 and 16 of block 144, Crystal Manor. The applicant does want to build a house there and they are right in the middle of the property. And here you can see where they are. They own 15 and 16, and the easements are in the middle of them. They do have an application. In the application, there's release from all the utility companies. Staff and environmental health staff have reviewed this and have no concerns and do recommend approval. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Katu. Board? Anyone? Anyone want to make a motion?
Do you have to do the public?
Oh, it's a public hearing. I'm getting, I have two different agendas up here and it's a little, they're not necessarily agreeing. My apologies. I literally do not have, is this a public hearing? Calling for, okay. So open it to the public for a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this matter? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion. Board?
I'll make a motion to approve PV 2023-00006 Bedwell.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Baze. Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Okay, Citrus County opioid settlement regional funds.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. My name is Shelley Katz. I'm Chief Operating Officer at LSF Health Systems, the managing entity for Citrus County Behavioral Health Services.
And I'm Erin Whitaker-Hawke. I'm the AVP of Clinical Program Operations at LSU.
So we're here to talk to you today about the settlement dollars that are coming to Citrus County through the opioid settlement. And first, just for those of you who aren't aware of the managing entity, I wanted to just give you a brief overview. We are contracted with the State Department of Children and Families to manage the safety net behavioral health services for individuals who are uninsured, underinsured, and indigent who need behavioral health services, substance abuse, and mental health. We serve a 23-county area, which includes Citrus County, and manage a network of about 78, 77, 78 providers that provide substance abuse and mental health services through those counties. And this is just a graphic of our service area. You can see the area that we serve. The opioid abatement funds, the state of Florida, through a number of lawsuits that were settled with the pharmaceutical companies related to opioid drugs, a lot of dollars came to the state that were dispersed in a number of different ways. It's a fairly complicated process that's been developed. So there are dollars that came directly to counties, and those in the settlement are referred to as qualified counties because they qualified to get dollars directly from the settlement, Attorney General's Office. And then the counties that have population of 300,000 people or less were called non-qualified counties. And those dollars were provided to the managing entities to manage on behalf of the counties. And Citrus County is one of the non-qualified counties that we have dollars in our budget to provide services in Citrus County. There are other dollars that came to the managing entity for specific services, things like hospital bridge programs, things like recovery community organizations, things like other treatment services. But the dollars that we're talking about today here are specific in our budget to be used in Citrus County. Also, part of the settlement was the Core Project, which you may be familiar with. Citrus County was one of the first 12 pilots of the Core Project. And so that was originally managed by the Department of Health and now is under the oversight of LSF Health Systems also. I can't see that. The settlement came with a number of goals. You can probably see the screen better than I can at this point. The big intent, honestly, the goal of these dollars is to increase capacity to serve people who have opioid use disorder, people who are struggling with addiction, people who are overdosing and who need treatment. To also, some of the other goals are to support evidence-based treatment, to make sure that the services we're investing in are effective and that they work, that we can provide additional services to support recovery from addiction that include things like housing, that include things like primary health care, that include things like case management to help people beyond just the very, the basic medication-assisted treatment to help with the actual addiction issues, all the other challenges that come when you're suffering from the disease of addiction. And then also to support public awareness, to reduce stigma so that people who are suffering with these addictions can seek help without fear and to develop the workforce to provide the services. So there were two schedules, and I think we've provided this to the community, but we can certainly provide them, they're too big to put on here. But there are two schedules in the settlement, one that lists the core strategies and one that lists the approved uses for the dollars. And I will say that the approved uses are very, very broad. They're very flexible. They are much more flexible than most of the state dollars that we manage on behalf of providers and Floridians and counties. There are some priorities. Medication-assisted treatment is the biggest priority. It is the standard of care for treating opioid addiction. So things like Suboxone, Methadone, Vivitrol are drugs that, medications that are used to treat people and help address the cravings and the addiction. The Core Project that we mentioned, hospital bridge programs that provides mental health support, whether it's through recovery peer specialists or clinicians at the hospital emergency department so that when people come in with an overdose, there are individuals there who can try to help connect them to services rather than just revive them and discharge them. And then the peer supports and recovery community organizations is recognition that individuals with lived experience who have gone, walked the road of recovery have a unique ability to connect with other people who are struggling with addiction and help them seek help. There are a number of priority populations listed here. Basically, anybody who has opioid addiction is a priority population. Anybody at risk of developing opioid use disorder is a priority population. And then women with children and pregnant women are always a priority population for substance abuse services. I don't know, you probably can't see this very well. We provided some data on overdoses by county, some different things about overdoses, emergency medical responses, that's a lot of data that the county can just look and see how you compare with the other counties. There are 19 non-qualified counties in our region that we're working with to disperse these funds. We can send this if you don't have it printed out, if you want to be able to see it. I know it's not set up so well to see from here. And so the role that Erin and I play in the managing entity at LSF Health Systems is the first thing we're working with the counties is to identify what task groups, what work groups, what efforts are already in place in the county. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We really want to work with you and your community to identify what's already in process, where the gaps are, what are the things that you would like to do but didn't have resources for, and really utilize, I know you have an opioid task force here. We've been talking with them, really making good use of the work that's already been done in the community and leveraging that into deciding, determining a plan to put these dollars into services. So where, in counties where we don't have an already established group, we will identify stakeholders. We can share information across counties about what other counties are doing, connect individuals who say want to start a paramedicine program with other counties who already have that in place, can provide technical assistance. We can work with the community to identify gaps and help determine a plan. The counties are required to submit an annual plan to the statewide policy council. We've developed a brief, very simple template. If the county chooses to use that to put a plan to paper, it's certainly optional and not required, but it sometimes gives counties who may not have a plan already developed a format to start organizing thoughts and tying them to what the allowable uses and strategies are from the settlement. And ultimately, our goal is to finalize plans with the counties and identify where the dollars are to go and the budget that's going to be appropriated towards each of those projects. And then LSF Health Systems would negotiate and implement the contracts. And we would manage the invoicing and payment on behalf of the county. In some counties where there is a paramedicine program through emergency medical services, we would do an agreement directly with the county. Otherwise, there are other community providers. Some are already in our network, some are not. But we can implement contracts with those providers and then provide data back to the county on the results of all of those investments.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have a question.
Oh.
So the, first of all, thank you for the information and being here to present it. The funds that the managing entity has, is that one budget for our region of non-qualified counties? Or does Citrus County have a specific budget because we were a non-qualified county?
Yes.
So what I'm hearing here and what it's leading me to is we already have an opioid task force that has a tremendous amount of horsepower on there. So I would, I would look to what their thought process was on this or where their priorities are, what they would like to see developed in terms of programs or initiatives for using that budget of funds that's allocated for the county. My concern and hopefully our representative on that board, Commissioner Baze, would express to that task force and any initiatives or programs that they start. Doesn't sound like these are reoccurring funds. This is going to be a one-time shot. And then?
So, no, that, that, no.
Oh, okay. All right.
So it is an 18-year settlement. And we just, and I didn't get this information in time to put it in the presentation, but we can pass it out to you. There's a breakdown specific to Citrus County for this year and the next 17 years.
Okay.
So it is recurring for 18 years. It does diminish over time. And so the first year is, there's a heavy upfront investment in year one, and then year two goes down to about half, and that stays fairly stable for several years. And then over the 18 years, it reduces. But you've got the projected schedule of funding there. So that can help your task force in planning one-time expenditures that we might want to do between now. The initial dollars are funded through June of 2024, the first year of funding. And so we're encouraging counties to think of things that are non-recurring expenses for year one in addition to building capacity for ongoing recurring type of expenses. And I was hoping you would say that you want us to work with the opioid task force because we have, we have met with them and they're a great group. And I think they have a lot of great ideas and it's probably the quickest way. Our goal is to try to get contracts in place in January so that we have the maximum amount of time to draw these dollars down this fiscal year and get them into services to help people. Sometimes when there are, and I'm trying to say this diplomatically, sometimes the county processes take a long time and it, the getting onto an agenda.
This would be the choir.
Getting onto an agenda and getting approval and then getting, it's, we're looking to try to expedite things as best we can because we want to try to use these dollars this year if we can.
And thank you for saying that you would encourage that task force to look at things that are non-recurring. My concern is we can already see yet another tough budget cycle shaping up for next year. And I would, I would hope that we don't come up with, you know, it's going to take. it's going to take X number of millions of dollars to continue this initiative that we started with these first-year funds. So, thank you. Good information. Thank you.
Our goal is to work with your community, to identify the needs that you think are most important to deal with the opioid crisis and to be as efficient and expeditious as we can in getting those dollars into services for your folks.
Thank you. And Commissioner Schleber, I believe you had something?
I wanted to thank you for this information. I just have a couple of questions. The state of Florida, I'm assuming the settlement, do you know how much the settlement was for the whole state?
I do not know in detail. It's billions of dollars.
I was gonna say billions.
Yes.
And we are a... We, our county, because we're under 300,000, is, what is the term you used?
It's called a non-qualified county in the settlement.
Non-qualified, so we have to go directly to Lutheran Services for money. How much admin fees do you collect on that? Oh, zero, thank you. Because I know Lutheran Services gets billions and billions of dollars. And sometimes I feel like the little counties don't get what maybe the others get because we are under 100, at this time it was 151. But we have, if you look at the data that you gave us, we have three times the deaths from the opioids. So for a county that's 151,021, we had 26 deaths in that year?
I don't have the data right in front of me, but there is a formula that was delivered, determined to do...
Yeah, so...
The allocations. And let me just, just let me clarify, just because, so LSF Health Systems is a part of Lutheran Services Florida. Lutheran Services Florida, based in Tampa, is our parent company. But we operate as a separate business unit, and I will tell you that our admin rate is 2.6%.
Oh, I thought you said zero.
Zero for these dollars.
Okay.
Zeros for these dollars, but our overall, across 260 million dollars of budget in 23 counties, we have a 2%, 2.6%.
And does the parent company charge an additional admin fee?
They charge us for support out of that 2.6 million dollars. I mean, 2.6%. It's not 2.6 million. 2.6%, we pay for our admin services. But again, we operate on a very, very lean admin budget. And these particular dollars have absolutely no admin tied to them. The 100% is going to the county.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Anything?
Well, we're getting consensus, and I know you said it'd be much easier just for the opioid task force to give it to you and then you can just fund the projects. But I mean, if Citrus County is involved in the money, I feel like the board should have some say or at least knowledge of the projects moving forward. There must be some projects already on the table if you're talking about moving forward in January. But I don't know what those projects are. I would like to. I heard you say some things that I liked, especially for pregnant mothers. And I don't even know if that's your priority, but as a board member, I would like that priority. So I don't know, obviously, we want you to get the dollars as quickly as possible and move ahead. But it would be nice if we had some knowledge of how the county is moving forward. If it was one year, I could see maybe, I understand you have to spend the money quick, but when we're talking about a long-term funding situation, I think that, you know, the board should be representative of that. I know we have one representative on the board, but I haven't heard anything brought back to us yet about what projects are on the table.
It isn't in a format yet. It isn't a formalized, it's basically a plan or an outline that is ready to be provided to the board. I 100% agree. Our typical practice would be to work with the task force, come up with a plan, allocate out what the task force is recommending as far as what services, with who, how much, and then present that to you in the form of a plan that you would, as the Board of County Commissioners, say yes or no, we agree or we don't agree. And if there is input that you'd like to have ahead of that time, I would say absolutely provide it, share it with the task force.
Well, I do have to say, I agree with Commissioner Cannard. When we're talking about a long-range plan, we wouldn't want to enter into a plan. It's like, hey, we can do all these great things and we're using this money, but now to make it very successful, the county needs to kick in all this extra money from the general fund. We wouldn't want to do that. We would have a good budget with this, these very tiny numbers that you have printed out for us.
Right, I know. We couldn't get our printer to work.
I understand.
But we can send it in a format that's easier to read. But I agree with you 100%. And the plan doesn't have to be an 18-year plan. It can be a one-year plan that's updated annually. So you may decide that year one, you want to invest in some one-time things, you know, workforce training, media, different things. And then year two, you may have other things that you want to do over a longer period and have a longer time to plan so that you can update your plan every year. It doesn't have to be like cask and stone this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Howard, well, you weren't in the briefing yesterday, but I believe the briefing said that there was a tight timeframe, like four months or something. Maricel?
The dollars are for this fiscal, state fiscal year, which ends June 30, 2024. There's a lot of back and forth about carry forward. I'll be 100% candid with you. We are arguing with the state that these dollars should carry forward to the county and should be exempt from the limits on carry forward that we have in statute for managing entities, and that's still under discussion. This is all new. The state's working with the Attorney General's Office. Everybody's trying to figure it out as we go. The expectation is the dollars, if not spent this year, will carry forward to another, just next year. But we want to try to make as much use of the dollars this year as we can because we're still not 100% clear on the way that's going to work.
Given that, what, I agree with Commissioner Cannard, that there's some big horsepower on the task force. And given that tight timeframe and our processes, which by the way, it does keep the United States from being a banana republic, but it does slow things, slows things down quite a bit. I would rather see that bulk of that time used on actually fleshing out fantastic ideas than having to be put into our chain of getting ready to come before the board. So I'm leaning towards just doing the opioid task force, given the timeframe of June. Commissioner Baze, you have not spoken yet. Do you want to say anything? And then I think Commissioner Finnegan just made a noise. Yes?
I think there's a difference between saying year one, since it's a quick turnaround, and the next 18 years. So if this board chose to want to go that route, like we have this great team of people, let's make it, let them use their process as quickly as possible. I don't know if I'd be on board to saying, hey, do that for the next 18 years because then there would be time, you know, for, to set a greater plan in place.
And that is 100% okay. We are trying to be as flexible as we can to make sure that we're getting consensus and buy-in from you all as the Board of County Commissioners and also from the community that you represent and manage that in a way that makes everybody comfortable that we're being responsible with the dollars and that we will have the data to report to the state as required. And that ultimately that the dollars get into the hands of the community to be able to help people who need help.
Yeah, I would agree. I think if this is what you're saying is that for this year, leave it in the hands of opioid task force for this first, next six months or whatnot. Then in the future, then opioid task force would still be in the driver's seat, but it would come before us for more formal approval for year-over-year plans. I do share my colleagues' concerns that we don't get, you know, you were all for this. Surprise, we're going to need a lot more money out of the general fund. So we really, we've got way too many challenges that we're trying to balance right now as it is, so.
We do appreciate that and understand the fiscal responsibility that you all are paying attention to. I will say, and I just want to put out on the table, the Core Project that is currently funded separately from this, that funding will diminish over time. And I don't have an actual projection of schedule for that, but I do believe the funding of this year of 750,000, I think maybe next year is 750,000, but then I think it starts to taper off and the state will probably be expecting that some of these dollars continue those services. So I just want to make you aware because I appreciate the challenge you have around, you know, starting things and then have to go find money to continue them.
And certainly, I would hope that we would get a formal update once plans are more, between now and June, when plans are more formalized.
Yes, we get, we get our schedule of funds every year in July or August, and we would be 100% open to sharing with you what funding there is for Citrus County under the settlement, non-qualified, and also under Core. We can certainly make you aware of that.
Commissioner Baze?
Thank you for the presentation. I see Carmen and Todd in the audience, and I think I see Tito out there. I will tell you, I get inundated with emails. They do great work. I appreciate everything that the opioid task force group does. I have full faith and confidence that they would be able to put together a team and develop a plan going forward. So that would be my recommendation. I don't think it hurts to bring back and pass it before this board, but I'm fully on board with giving them the reins and letting them come up with that program.
Anything further?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to put in my, I concur with you that Citrus County Opioid Task Force to review the projects for the 2023, 2024. Hopefully, that'll cut out some red tape and we can move forward.
Okay. So we're providing direction that we want the Citrus County Opioid Task Force to review projects, submit them to LSF Health Systems. So I need a motion...
I thought we were authorizing the opioid task force to select a committee.
Well, it's A, B, and C. There's two choices on A. Madam Attorney, can you help untangle how this is written, please? I think you may be right. It's just, we're just voting on B. Yeah, choose one, B, I think. I think Commissioner Baze is correct. Yes? Is it, is it A, B, or C that we vote on?
Maricel?
Hello?
Hi.
I'm sorry.
So A was either provide direction to have the Citrus County Opioid Task Force review the projects or bring them back to the board. So you've selected the opioid. B was the opioid task force to put together a committee to select those projects. And then C is more for county staff to bring the projects or from the county to the county administrator, and then we can take them up to the opioid task force.
So we're looking for a motion on B then?
A, B, and C.
All three or just one?
All three. We need, we need a motion.
I don't, I don't understand because C sounds like it's in conflict with B.
Well, C was for county staff to bring the projects to the county administrator. So for example, we have EMS as part of the task force.
Okay, okay.
They would go to the county administrator, get an okay from him, and then we would submit the projects to the opioid task force for review.
Okay, so A is just provide direction. We need to vote on B and C?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve B and C for fiscal year 23, 24.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, a second by Commissioner Baze.
Chair.
Yes.
Do you want to give direction for A, that that is the direction that you want? Because there is three items under that, A, B, and C. So A, you want the first one that says the board wants the Citrus County Opioid Task Force to review projects and submit them to LSF.
Yeah, I'll do a quick consensus, but that's what I heard from all five, but I'll do an official consensus if that's what you need.
Well, I believe it needs to be a part of the motion, correct?
It sounds like right now the motion is regarding B and C and that they're going to deal with A when they get done with B and C.
It is? Oh, my God.
Madam Chair?
Just change the motion to A, B, and C for fiscal year 23 and 24.
But A being, you need to add the part about opioid task force.
Yes, well, it seems like B is stating that for A, but, okay, to make everyone happy.
Yes.
We don't want county staff coming up with projects and sending them to the opioid task force. What, I don't think we do. From what I, from what I heard up here during the presentation discussion was we have a short period of, short period, oh, short window, a short window to work with this money. It may or may not come back to us in the second year, but that we trust the opioid task force to come up with these projects, submit them to the managing entity, and let's get them funded and rolling. Let's not put us back in the mix for more discussion or county staff back in the mix. I would say, I would say the first, direction on the first part stops where it says, or does the board want to review the projects? No, let's trust the task force to handle this and move forward with submitting them to them.
But what Maricel just said was that it's for things like EMS to be able to submit projects to the task force. Has nothing to do with us. It's not going through us at all.
Isn't EMS on the opioid task force?
Yes, but it has to go through, what, Maricel, you explain it again.
As long as you're okay with that, then we can do that. We can skip C because they're already part of the task force.
Yeah, I'll say it again, that task force, looking through the list of folks there, that's, those are the people that need to be deciding these things.
No, we're all in agreement on that, but the reason I stopped, I flipped is because of what Maricel said. Is that it's just to make sure that staff has our authority to submit ideas or their, their concepts to the opioid, opioid task force.
But without coming back to us.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, so motion to approve A, B, and C, A being opioid task force, yes?
Yes.
Is that clear enough? No?
The first did amend the motion, but the second did not.
Okay, but that, I wanted to make sure that the motion was clear enough for you, okay?
Second.
Alrighty.
Okay, thank you.
My motion is second. Any public comment? Who got the massage chair? That's not cool.
Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge Commissioners. I have no objection with, and I agree with letting the task force. And I'm not sure if what I'm about to say next is in the context at this point, but it was mentioned within their presentation. And I look at only one issue particularly, and that is the drugs or medications that are being used. And I think that the, they need to review maybe some of them because I could tell you now, they mentioned methadone. I have friends that weren't heroin that came back from Vietnam, went on methadone. It did not prevent them from addiction and it did not prevent them from their ultimate death. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Anyone further? Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we really do need to move E16 up, get ahead of open to the public. I am sorry, but this is a really critical thing that is time-sensitive. It was a walk-on because it is due by Friday, and we are going to lose a commissioner at 3:30, so. And then I promise we will go to open to the public directly thereafter. Yes?
I might have Erin, if she'll come forward, if you could, Erin, to talk about this cop screen. I think the sheriff's office was going to be in the audience, but I don't see them here.
Sheriff's in the back corner.
Okay, perfect.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. Back in May, the sheriff's office came to the board um and asked for permission to apply for the cops grant. Um, I believe in total they applied for forty-four positions. Um, as you knew, at the beginning of November, they received notification that they were awarded the cops grant. Since that time, we received a copy of the award letter. Um, that has gone through our legal department to make sure um, you know, the information included, you know, is what we needed. However, the sheriff's office has come back and said that they would like the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners to sign as an authorized representative. Um, the Department of Justice has some information on their website about authorized representatives. So that information um was also shared with legal and then Colonel Witt came and met um with administration last Thursday. We had a call, a very brief call with their contact at the DOJ. And we informed her that we were not the same entity. We do not have the same tax ID, the same UEI number, the same SAMs count. And so in that discussion regarding authorized representatives, that needs to be someone who can legally um enter into contracts with the federal government on the entity's behalf. So when we explained to her we were not the same entity, she said um that's, you know, there needed to be two signers for the grant. However, they could both be from the sheriff's office, um from that entity. From that, there's some additional backup regarding um the number of positions that were approved as well as some financial information. This is based on the financial information that was provided by the sheriff's office in September. Um, we understand um that their financial person was not in the office, so these were the best figures that we had to work with. And as you know, from this past budget year, um, some of the funding that is required would come from impact fees because it is one-time capital expenditures for new services. So obviously, that funding is still there. As you recall, when we started the budget, meetings, we had put uh the match aside. However, through uh budget and the budget meetings, um the sheriff's office came and uh spoke with you and they were um, they believed they would not be receiving the award. And so um they took part of that funding. I actually got the total amount. It was, let's see, two point two million five hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, that had been sent aside for the match, so.
I'm sorry, Aaron, could you say that number again?
Yes. Two million five hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
Thank you.
As part of the match. Obviously, the impact fee funding remains in the impact fee account because that's where it's going to stay. It can't be used for anything else. So in front of you, um, basically, the memo just goes over what the grant um award is for, the difference uh between the forty-three that they were approved for. Obviously, the sheriff's office has stated that's their goal, is to hire all forty-three. But that's a large goal in one year, so they were confident they could hire fifteen during that time. Um, so we prepared a budget transfer for those fifteen sworn positions. And then in the back, under recommended action, there's several options. So we're looking to the board for um direction regarding um the number of sworn positions that the board would like to approve, um the number that they would like to fund this year, if any. The sheriff's office has three years to fulfill the grant's requirement. Um, according to the sheriff's office, so they have the three years to hire all of those positions if the board so chose to fund all of those positions. So it could also be done, you know, partially in budget year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, so on and so forth. So if you have any questions, um I will try to answer them. We haven't had this information very long. Legals looked at it as well, so we'll do the best we can to answer them.
Madam Chair? Commissioner Kennard?
Aaron, how much is in the uh, how much money is in the uh um impact fee account for law enforcement?
I believe right now it's about one point nine. It's a little over one point nine million dollars.
Okay. All right. Well, I will go ahead and get us started here, if that's okay. Based on my understanding, the two signatures um for this grant need to have access to um the information on how many people have been hired, uh how many new people have been hired since the grant was awarded, the financials of hiring those people, and um quite possibly some other data in uh regarding those hires that we simply don't have access to. It's I also understand that that with some type of an agreement that the attorney could draw up uh that would allow the uh sheriff's office to have two people sign this, which uh Department of Justice set right, that they were that that representative agreed that because we're two different entities, that that was the appropriate approach to take. Uh, that uh one of those signatures from sheriff's office would be their highest level financial individual that naturally would have access to all of that data that we do not have access to. Many people, for those watching at home, many people don't understand that for various reasons, uh we, you know, we don't have access to all that data. There's some some things that need to be protected within the entity of the sheriff's office uh for the mission that they that they carry out. We approved their budget, but then that money goes there and they have access to all that information we don't necessarily have access to. I don't have an issue with, uh in fact, I I am happy that we got the award for forty-three new positions. I believe we need those folks uh over the next over the next three years to be added uh to the police force. I I think that it makes it much more manageable uh to digest if we can come to an agreement with sheriff's office that this board will not support any more than uh fifteen new positions uh per year over the next three years with a maximum of forty-three over three years. Uh, I believe that that our match uh when it comes to those uh fifteen positions uh for the first year uh would be two point, what was the number, two point?
One, seven, four, three, sixty-seven.
And so that we could use roughly eight hundred thousand in impact fees. And then that leaves us a balance that we need to find in our existing budget uh to cover those uh those employees once they're hired on. That's that's the direction that I would that I would like to see this board go. And there I I will I will put this out there well in advance that if the board does go down this road uh as as I'm talking about, uh I will not support a higher budget uh for the sheriff's office beyond ne- next year, uh beyond this year's budget and the three percent cola. Then, of course, we're gonna have to add on the additional fifteen positions for next year. But we can't come back with a higher number for this and a higher number for this. And oh, yeah, by the way, you guys agreed to give us fifteen more positions. Uh, the money just is not gonna be there. So that's my position on this, based on the information that I've gotten. Uh, I wanna see us uh use this opportunity to increase the size of our police force in the county. It's needed. Uh, I had told um the uh folks I I had a meeting with this morning that I think probably the uh the number one complaint that I field anymore is I've called the sheriff's office about speeding in our neighborhood. I've called, you know, the sheriff's office about the four-wheelers along the right-ofways, and they keep telling us they simply do not have enough folks on the force to cover our growing county. So I hope we go down this road. I hope we utilize this opportunity and uh expand the sheriff's office.
So, Aaron, is that correct? We're looking at one point three million dollars that we need to come up with after the impact fee money is used?
Yes, roughly, yes.
And what's your ideas for the one point three million dollars?
So right now, um that budget transfer is coming from reserves. So without further discussion from the board or some type of direction, the only place we have that kind of funding available would be from reserves.
You're the appropriate one since I wanted to put less in reserves and nobody wanted to take money from reserves. Go for it.
That um um the reserves is non-recurring uh are non-recurring funds. Uh, my suggestion, and I know it's going to be a bit of a hot topic possibly, is that we um increase significantly our road resurfacing budget this year from whatever it was, seven, eight million dollars past year to thirteen million dollars this year. My suggestion would be that this one point two come out of that budget. We move that, we do a transfer uh to cover these as these people are hired. It doesn't have to co- all come out right now, but as they're hired uh that we move that money over there. In April, uh we will have a true-up that I believe likely will cover a good portion of all, if not all of this. And then that money could move be be moved back into the road resurfacing budget. Uh, you can spend uh and and I don't I don't know that the road resurfacing budget bid is even out there yet, is even has even hit the street yet. So we're we're a long ways off from spending that money. And um I believe that you could spend the gas tax dollars first while we're waiting on the hires to hit to ho- the hires to move up to fifteen and ultimately to April when we get the true-up numbers and we can move that money back over into the road resurfacing budget, uh likely when the work is being done and bills come due.
Heather, you wanna go before Finnegan?
Another question for you then, Aaron. Uh, how much, I can't remember the number, how much money was added to the road resurfacing budget? Because I know we had a plan to get us where we needed to be and that was some of that money that we were supposed to cut down from taxes. We did not. It was all put into that budget. How much money was that?
Um, I wanna say it was from, are you just talking about the sheriff's money or overall?
Um, so overall, we had different po- pockets of money to save, to bring down that mileage rate. And we didn't do that. We moved a pocket of money to the road resurfacing budget. What was that pocket of money that got moved over?
I believe it was about three million dollars that went from general fund.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go through a couple of timelines and you can help me out here. When we were given this budget or this grant, it looked, it was over five years from what I understood. There was a three-year and then a true-up in five. Is that correct?
Looking at the grant letter, the grant funding will cover three years. It then says that we have to keep those officers for another twelve months. However, the entire period of performance of the grant is five years, so I believe the sheriff wanted to keep those individuals for five years.
And this grant only covers one hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, per sworn officer.
So that grant would cover the federal funds as five and a half million? Roughly?
I believe the final they got was five million three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So the balance of what we would be responsible for would be eight million?
Yes, a little over eight million. That is just salary and fringe. Obviously, the grant does not cover other operational costs and it does not cover capital costs.
So if I go back to their budget when this was given to us for this year, they presented one in March and then one in June. And the cost per deputy just for personal expenses um initially went from eighty-six thousand fifty-four dollars to ninety-seven thousand seven forty-three within that three-month period. The overall cost went from one sixty-eight sixteen to a hundred and eighty-four thousand fifty-five. So if this is only gonna cover one twenty-five, that would only cover the portion of if they start if the, because they have in here a starting salary of sixty thousand five oh seven.
And it's actually one twenty-five over the three-year period. So it won't even be for an entire year. And what it's supposed to happen according to the grant document is over the three years, the grant funding should go down as the actual funding budgeted goes up. So I believe when the sheriff's office presented um for the ease of presenting the numbers, they did forty percent, forty percent, and forty percent over the three years to use as much of that funding as possible. It might be slightly different. It might go forty-five, forty, and then thirty-five, um because it should go down every year. At least that's according to the grant letter that we received. And I'm sorry, we haven't had it that long. Um, and you know, we've gone through it as best we can.
And then in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we gave them funding for ten deputies. Is that correct?
That's correct. In July of twenty-three.
And then we gave them funding for another ten deputies for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
Um, no, that was for them to ke- keep those ten deputies. So when they presented their budget for fiscal year twenty-four, the ten deputies had not been approved yet, so we had to go back in and add it to their fiscal year twenty-four budget. We approved it in July of twenty-three, so we gave them the money for twenty-three. And then we went and added that funding for those ten deputies into their budget for fiscal year twenty-four.
So it's just a total of ten?
Yes.
And have those ten been hired or do you know?
I do not know.
Any conversation and maybe, I don't know, Mr. Howard? I guess my concern is if you bring on an additional forty-three deputies, wh- what do I mean, do you have the administrative staff to oversee that? Is there additional cost? I mean, I understand what my fellow Commissioner um Kennard said about, you know, just holding at the three percent cola. But I I mean, that was the complaint this year. Three percent didn't even cover the cost. So I I don't know. I I I mean, you're bringing more people on. You have these additional costs that keep coming every year. I I we can say that, but at the end of the day, we still are responsible, the funding for it. And as it stands right now, um the bud- the sheriff's budget is about forty-five percent, I believe, of our agglorm collections. And then we still have to fund the other constitutional officers from that as well. And then the Board of County Commissioners have to be funded from that balance. So I I um between what we give the sheriff, which I think is about thirty-nine million roughly, and um then you've got the two cities that fund them and you have the funding that comes in from the schools. So and the best that I can calculate that And the best that I can calculate that, it looks like it's. Probably approaching another six million dollars. So they're upwards of. Forty-seven million dollars is a total budget package and I. There were three commissioners that voted to do an uh increase on the budget and I read sound off. And um. People haven't been none too happy about it and. I thought we went forward in good faith in this budget to try to do what we could to give them everything that they asked for. I don't think I can support this. I think if they want to sign that grant and with the funding that they get and and work it in. That's up to them, but I don't think that we're in a position to to add anything else to our plate right now.
Well, I'm gonna say some things um that aren't gonna be perhaps politically correct in a sense. I've been filled with a lot of drugs this week and a lot of radiation, so you're gonna get a. You're gonna get the full Ruthie here. I feel like. When we did this budget and it was painful and we needed to increase the 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 amount. Because for years we had been working in a deficit. And as a business owner, and this is a large corporation, we had to make some some um some tough choices. We were told over and over that the sheriff isn't most likely gonna get this uh grant. So in good faith, we gave uh the money in July of twenty-twenty-three for ten additional positions. According to the Facebook page, as far as I can gauge, they hired six. I would need confirmation of that, but they got the money for ten. Then in the new budget of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, they got the full money for ten again. Uh we also, because the sheriff's office said, listen, we're not gonna get this cops grant, we're not gonna get it. I believe, I want to believe that they were telling me the truth, telling us the truth, that they really didn't think they were gonna get it. So what we did as a board is we gave them the additional. Two point five million that was set aside for the cops grant because they weren't gonna get the grant. So that two point five is sitting in the sheriff's office. He can do with it whatever he wants to do with it. If he wants to take that two point five and put it towards this one point. Eight million, great, but we don't have the authority. We don't have the power to tell the sheriff to do anything. Once he has the money, he has the money. But I am curious to know, can the sheriff amend the number of forty-three before the three years is up?
According to the document we've received, it does say in there that they can contact the DOJ. If they need to amend the award um to lower the number or to change the type of position.
But if the board says they're going to. Fully finance this forty-three, we're committed to that then, even if he amends it?
I don't know. I don't know how the DOJ would look at that.
Okay, so I don't think that we have the money for this. It it would be great. Um but we gave the two point five set aside to the sheriff already. So I think that if the sheriff wants to sign the contract uh with DOJ or the feds. And have his financial officer sign it, that's his business, but. You know, we we can't because as Commissioner Kennard stated, we have, we do not have access to the records. We what what we get is what we get and it's um sometimes it's on a need to know basis or. They'd have to kill us if they told us, you know, uh how much money goes to each department and to the to the patrols and. I just don't see how we can swing it. I really don't. It would be great to have a them fully funded. But somebody has to pay for that and like Commissioner Baye said. We're, they're at forty-three percent of our working budget right now. And with this would be put it over. So the rest of the money is being shared by four constitutional, three constitutional and this board. Is that right? Four constitutions and the board. Um and that, he's pushing, he's getting close to the fifty percent mark. And when people complain that, oh, we had to raise your taxes and do this and that, well. You you guys want public safety, so you have to decide, do you really want public safety? Do you want your roads paved? What do you want? And we only have so much money, so I just don't, I cannot get there. I've run the numbers, I've looked at the different criterias, I've. I just, I just don't see how I can support this. And it's not a popular thing to say that because the PR department from the sheriff's office is gonna come out strong. The commissioners don't support your public safety. Well, I'm saying right now, I want to support your public safety, but we only have so much money. So, there you go.
Madam Chair. Just a point of correction. Uh I believe the uh right at the, right at the end of our budget discussions. Uh the two point five million that was added in was because we had uh. Uh we had left out a previous percentage of like three percent that would have normally been included. For the increase. That was, that two point five was to cover the cost. I think there were three things. I want to say it was FRS, uh increased contributions. Uh possibly insurance and workers' comp. I'm I'm not. I'm not positive, but I think it was to cover the the increases in those things. So I don't think that it was just, here's an extra two point five, um you know, to do with what you want to. The um the other point that I would, that I would make and and I I feel like I remember the discussion somewhat well. Um we, there there was discussion about the the other ten, twenty positions. That had been approved previously. There were ten hired and then come back to us for the other ten. And that sat on a desk somewhere for months on end until we finally approved it uh for last year's budget. Uh but if we had no intention of finding a way to fund these uh. These forty-three positions, and I agree, you know, what we heard was, and sheriff had data to back it up. There's, there's, you know, this is not gonna happen, you know? If we're lucky, we may get one or two, we may get ten, you know, that kind of thing. Well, they funded all all forty-three, but if we. If we had no intention of finding a way to fund those forty-three over the next three years. The discussion should have been, I will not support applying for this at forty-three. I will support applying for twenty positions. You know, that's, that's water under the bridge at this point. Um we, we applied for those positions. Uh we were granted the uh the monies for them. I think it's on this board now to find out how we're going to cover that difference over the next three years. I think we can get there. Uh as, you know, as I said earlier, I think, I think we limit it to uh fifteen new, new positions per year. Uh and ultimately, I I believe that we can make that happen. But the, I just want, wanted to make uh, wanted to make those two points.
Go ahead. Well. I recall my comment as well. And I said at that time that there was no way that I would go for forty-four positions when we funded. What I thought at the time was twenty. Now I think you're telling me ten. So either way, whether it was ten or twenty, my point was, I'm not going to agree to a cops grant of forty-four when we're funding something now. So. That's one component of this. Um number two, I, you know, again, I'm not in the business, it's not my budget. And um the governor has basically given sheriff's offices um the autonomy over their budget. They don't have to answer to us for any questions once they get the money, but uh. I've looked online across multiple counties and I see postings for deputies um at the beginning hire of fifty thousand dollars. But ours, the last one we got was over sixty thousand dollars. So. You know, and I know deputies have gotten five thousand dollar raises and ten thousand dollar raises in a year's time and. I I don't know where we're at with this and I I think that, you know. What I would also like to see if we're gonna go down this road is that. Uh I know it's a, still a shift, it's still on taxes, on ad lorm. But I fully believe that a sheriff's budget should be funded by an MSTU. And the reason I believe that is because he has to go to the public, he has to get their buy-in, he's responsible for it. To answer to the public, not just this board of county commissioner, when you want to come to us and ask for money. Go out, work it, sell it. Once it's in there, that's the only thing that that money can be used for. It's accountable. That's exactly where the dollars go and that's exactly where they can be spent and then you're accountable to the citizens of Florida. At the end of the day, I don't care if it's the board of county commissioners, if it's the sheriff, if it's the clerk or the tax collector, whoever it is. We have one boss, one collector of revenue source, and that's the citizens of this county. And we should work together. This isn't us versus them. We collect the bunnies coming out of the same pot. And we should be working together to fund what we need in this community. Not be adversarial and go, it's like, we're just, we're picking scabs. And we need to be kinder and gentler with one another. There's only so much money.
I I just want to say one thing about the cops grant. When it came forward. It seemed to me, oh, we gotta, we gotta apply for this now. We gotta get this going. Can the board, does the board vote to approve it? Yes, that sounds great. Let's apply for this grant. Not, and then. Ye- yes, we, it was a chance to get it. But there wasn't, we didn't have the opportunity to say, oh, no, we don't want you to apply for that because we're not willing to fund it. Because there were other things that happened during, between the a- application and receiving it. So it wasn't like it was in a perfectly neat order, oh, yeah, we we can, we want you to do this, but then we're not gonna back it. Well, we're not, we're gonna back it because his budget went up quite a bit and we had to bring that two point five million over. So I just want you all to, it wasn't in a neat little package that we could succinctly say, okay, this is what we're doing. But we are where we are today and how are we going to afford this? And it isn't, if you look at the paper, you look at people's complaints, it's the board of county commissioner that raised your taxes. It's vote them all out. Well, it isn't just, it, we didn't raise it just for our needs. We raised it because we need to support forty million dollars of public safety. Out of a pot of ninety-nine million. So uh that, I love the MSTU. I hope you do bring this forward, Commissioner Baye. You've brought it up several times. I would like you to put, you know. The rubber to the road and get that going because then. The citizens, the taxpayer can say, this sheriff, what are you doing with this amount of money? And it can kind of help out to be more transparent. So I just wanted to clear that part up. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Um. One thing about being chair is you get to be quiet till the end. Um. I am absolutely delighted that we got the cops grant. Um I think that it makes our money go farther. However, we are in a very um sticky situation. Because the budget is already set for this year. And three of us did vote to, instead of um. Taking the taxes back down, we left it in the four million or three million dollars for road resurfacing. Because you may or may not have noticed, but a lot of our roads are nearing rebuilding status. And every single year that we don't fund them fully, um it's gonna cost us a lot more money. So there's a lot of moving parts up here. Costs uh over three times as much to rebuild a road as it does to repave it. So every year we delay, we are um costing ourselves more and more money. So three of us took the heat for doing that and I am not. I can't in good conscience go back on that because we are for the first time fully funding our road resurfacing. Um so my inclination is to. Erin, let me ask a point of clarification. The two point five million, the notes I have in my briefing from yesterday said that that was. The portion of the cops grant already funded and Commissioner Kennard is saying that that is not so.
Hmm that was the money that was set aside for the cops grant.
But we used it for something else that the sheriff wanted?
Correct. I believe um Commissioner Kennard, not speaking for him, was saying when the sheriff made the presentation. He brought up other expenses that he had that went over the three percent. Um including FRS, um their retirement, like well, insurance, things like that.
Right. Um I am going to somewhat reluctantly have to um. Agree with my colleagues to this side and say that we just can't do more, not this year. Um I would hope that the four that he hasn't hired already, if that is true, could actually go under the cops grant. Do as light as possible on this current fiscal year and then um we're gonna have to make room for as many as this county needs. And it, that might be the full amount um for the following two years. Because I absolutely agree with Commissioner Kennard that um. You know, I think the the biggest complaint I hear is road resurfacing, but number two is speeding. Lots and lots of speeding or ATVs or anything else. So I do believe that they're under understaffed. Um but we just have too many. Too many um things that we need to cover to backfill that had not been invested in in the past and um not enough money to go around. So that would be the way I'm leaning. Anybody else like to speak? Commissioner Kennard?
No additional money.
So you're saying? No way that that um the board is. That there's no way that the board uh, the the chair uh is going to sign the cops grant. That we agreed to apply to. If the sheriff wants to sign the cops grant with two signatures from his office. Um then the sheriff's office is on the hook for. Uh the balance of the funds that are not coming from the cops grant, is it?
There's two separate issues. Um number one, I want to thank you for that very able explanation you saved me from that on. We don't need to sign this um because we do not have the information. It literally says, if I were to sign it as chair, that I would be personally liable for perjury if any of the documents I'm ascertaining to be true. Um are found to be false and there's no way I can know whether they're true or not. So um the sheriff's department needs to sign that. The second issue is how much we're going to fund. And what I'm saying is that we can go as, he can use the money that he's already been. Um given to, you know, by us um to fund as many as he can this current fiscal year. But then we need to really look at how we can fund a lot more next year and the year after. Up to whatever amount this county actually needs to absorb because I do think that we are understaffed. I think his department is understaffed. But if he has four that he hasn't already hired, I believe those can go under the cops grant, so that's four right there. Maybe he can get to ten with his current budget and then we have thirty-three left to do in two years. That's my thinking. I'm not, I'm not comfortable going into reserves.
My, my understanding is, no, and I I don't want to go into reserves either. I think that uh that's, these are reoccurring expenses and we should not be pulling from reserves uh for reoccurring expenses. Um I don't, I don't believe that any hiring that's in the process will qualify. For these cops grant positions. They have to um. My understanding of it is that they have to be entirely new applicants, processes, stuff like that. Once this, once this grant begins. Um I don't know that it makes sense, or I I I can't see it happening. That that the sheriff's office would uh. That, that the sheriff's office would, uh, put two signatures on this grant. Knowing that the board is not, uh, the board is supporting. None of the hires under this grant for the first year. And, um. May or may not support any hires, uh, for the second and third year, there's no guarantees of that. Um, so. I think if. If I'm understanding, if I'm now understanding your position correctly. Uh, I can't, I can't see the sheriff doing that, uh, I mean, I don't wanna speak for him, obviously, he can come up and speak for himself. Um, but. Uh, I think it's, I think it's an opportunity lost. And, I mean, it looks like that's the direction this board is going, I think, from what I'm, from what I'm hearing, but maybe we'll see what the sheriff has to say.
So it seems like the sheriff's office was awarded this, or they found, found out maybe a month and a half ago? So during that time. I don't know if you all were privy, we were not. This came in an email, which I didn't see until eleven something at ten thirty, this whole packet, which. I'm not sure why we couldn't have had this yesterday. Um, and Mr. Howard, you've either met with the sheriff or Colonel Witt or both. So I think that some, we're guessing. I would, we, we haven't been privy to any of these meetings, and I didn't hear anything that came out of the meetings with you. Uh, in my briefing yesterday, so maybe you can shine a little light. On how this was, when I saw the sheriff out, probably, I don't know, it might have been six weeks ago, and he was very happy. I said, oh, wow, because, you know, we had money that got used, you really need to talk to Steve Howard. Um, and, and see how this whole grant works out, because we weren't privy to the whole grant either, so obviously that happened. And here we are all this time later, it's due Friday, we get this the day of.
Yeah, I think part of it, there's a legal review required too, that, uh, had to go through that process. Yeah, it's, it's not my timeline, but, um, and then, of course, uh, trying to get together, we had a meeting last week with Colonel Witt. I've had multiple meetings with the sheriff too, but that's, it's a process, and always yet, there's a due date, you know, kinda coming, uh, to fruition on the fourteenth. Um, so, and that meeting was held last week, but there's a process to, you know, for the vetting of the, of the documents, and Aaron may wanna share that, but. Um, we had what we had to review and look at, kinda go through that, that legal review.
Thank you, that told me nothing, Sheriff, I, I don't know if you. Wanna shine any light on this, but I feel like we're, there was a lot of information shared, or we're not getting any of it.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Who, who said that?
I did. I just wanna make sure you wanted the sheriff to come.
We, we had the opportunity for the first time to have a phone call with the DOJ, which was last Thursday. Um, as well as staff, so to say you know that too, is we don't have, we don't have access to the DOJ at our level, um, to be able to do that either, so. And then, some of the comments that were made with, you know, we're, as we're moving through this with legal and going through the process. Um, there was other perimeters that were used in the past, we're trying to work through all those and get everybody together to have that, that discussion, so. That's, that's part of the timelines, um, obviously, if we could have this months ago, that would've been good too, but it's a, it's a process going through reviews.
Madam Chair.
Um, and I, I need to be the one to invite people up. Um, what do you have? Go ahead.
My, my question was more pertaining to how we were funding this, not legal review. I assume that's what you were discussing with the sheriff.
Well, mine was just, we don't, I can't, until we got the conclusion from legal, we didn't know what to talk with the sheriff's office about. I mean, we have no way of having that discussion, because the documents that we had was asking for the chair. You know, to sign it, so we had to, there was a process that we had to go through, just like everything has to go through legal review first, and I don't think we got that document till. Seventeenth, so I mean, it's just a process that, that, once we got the notification to go through that process.
Welcome, Sheriff.
Madam Chair. Ladies, gentlemen. So. Back on May eleventh. After multiple meetings with Mr. Howard. Uh, Colonel Witt came in to represent the sheriff's office as we put together this, uh, grant application to get it signed. Which was unanimously supported by the five of you. Going back a little bit earlier in history, when we submitted our entire budget packet for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We put a staffing study in there, and we talked about how many sworn positions we needed to put into patrol. And in that staffing study, we said we needed to do this in a phased operation. In fact, we talked about putting twenty-two into the budget for the fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And we had a couple vacancies, and I think some of the board members didn't understand what vacancy float was, and how that money gets absorbed when you have a vacancy. By time and a half that you pay for deputies to fill those positions. And it's probably because some of the pre-year, previous members of the board did not have the budget experience from running a business and understanding. Uh, the, the factors that are associated with overtime. But we talked about it at great length, and when we. Put the budget together, we said we wanted twenty-two new positions for twenty-two, twenty-three's budget year. We wanted fifteen for phase two, which would be the second year, and we wanted to add eleven more for phase three, which would be the third year. And then by that time, we, we'd do, do another full-blown analysis of our needs for staffing. I can tell you right now, today, when I wake up every morning. I need three hundred sworn law enforcement officers to serve a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine citizens you call Citrus County home. That's the permanent residents of our community that are according to the census. And I found out last night, and I talked to one of the commissioners about this today, which I was kinda shocked to learn of this number. We had over nine hundred thousand visitors to the city of Crystal River last year. That's, came from the mayor and members of the council, uh, last night, nine hundred thousand people. That adds a workload factor to my deputies that are out there supporting our full-time residents, and to the detectives and the communications officers and everybody else. And I have no idea what the city of Empana sees for tourists. Uh, I've never been able to find that data, and I haven't seen accurate data on what the county sees for tourists in a couple of years, because. We, we blamed a lot of that data lag on the, um, COVID effect. What I do know about the COVID effect is that the county got about nine point eight million dollars of ARPA money as a consequence of COVID. And that money was set aside to do some special things. And I know that we continued to do our analysis, and we said that we were allowed by the parameters of the DOJ grant. To apply for a maximum of twenty percent of our current staffing. Well, that equated to forty-four. Which did not get us to the three hundred that we needed, when you added it to the two twenty, that would've brought us up to two hundred and sixty-four. Leaving us a shortfall of thirty-six, uh, positions to serve our current residents right now in this community. And yes, I did say, I have no idea what we're gonna get. We could apply for the forty-four, we might get nothing. The history of the last few years has revealed just that, there are a lot of applications that go in, and about twenty-five to thirty-some odd percent get approved every year. But I also realized that we could get a few, and when we had that discussion, we said. We need more sworn staff right now to help us out. And the cost is only going up. In the preceding years, we've seen the cost of hiring a new deputy and bringing him on. One FTE has gone from about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand when we submitted. Our budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, and now, yes, indeed, it is up to a hundred and eighty-plus thousand dollars when you hire one new FTE. Four just raised the, the cost of our pursuit vehicles by nearly thirty percent. And oh, by the way, just like they did a few years ago, when they raised the cost of the, the Explorer. Forty percent when they got rid of the Taurus. It, they raised that, and we found out about it after we submitted our budget for the fiscal year that we happen to be operating in. So there's a lot of unknowns that are out there, uh, that we deal with from time to time, and some of those things come up after we submit our budget. But with a hope and optimism of getting some form of that grant money, which is, by the way, none of you have mentioned. That's our money that we sent to Washington DC, that we are obligated. To try and harvest to bring back and support our citizens, that's five point three million dollars. That places like Los Angeles, California, Oakland, San Francisco. Washington DC, Chicago, New York City, Philadelphia, they're doing a great job of harvesting monies like that to bring it back. And it just so happens this year, of all the grant recipients that are out there. Florida got the fifth largest grant in the United States of America. Because of the great need that was identified by the data that we included in our grant submission. And it was the Citrus County Sheriff's Office. Who was identified as having the fifth greatest need for manpower support to serve our existing population. Right now, today, tonight, when people go home. And it's still a drop in the bucket. And as I've told you before, and I'll, I'll mention it again. The academies that are out there are not producing more deputies today than what they were every year for the past twenty years. Do I think we're gonna be able to hire forty-three deputies out of the forty-three positions that were approved like that? No. And their last two years' data can bear that out. When we got, at the end of July, the approved budget amendment that was degraded. By greater than fifty percent, that, from what we submitted. Nearly six months earlier. We got ten positions. We had barely nine weeks to go out and hire ten new deputies with no academies really effectively graduating. Did we hire all ten of those before the end of fiscal year? No. But we bought the capital for most everything that we needed, with the exception of a couple of things that didn't come in. And when an academy graduates in the next few days, we're gonna fill the remainder of those positions, because those people have been in the pipeline. And we cannot apply those applicants against the DOJ cops grant, it is forbidden by the rules. Of engagement for that particular grant. So. We've got great needs, and we can't get to the calls for service for traffic requirements, or marine requirements. Or all of these other things that are occurring across our county, uh, and the, the, the continuous drain of, uh. Of assets towards some of these events. We spent probably as many hours as we could shaking the trees to try and fill those positions before the end of the. Uh, September month, a- and we fell short, because there was nobody out there to harvest. So we've got a lot of work in front of us, but unanimously, the board supported us applying for that grant. And there's a lot of money that was set aside and talked about out there, and the acknowledgement that, I appreciate Commissioner Kennard for mentioning this, is. There was, when the, when the budget guidance memo came out, there was no acknowledgement for FRS increases or other. Other mandatory increases that are out there, that every one of our agencies have to deal with, and on our case, because we have high-risk employees. It was far greater exacerbated than some of the other entities that are out there when it comes to the FRS cost. So we, we did our due diligence, and we're trying to do the absolute best to support our citizens. Realistically. We hired eighteen new positions last year, through normal attrition, turnover, and retirements. The year before, we hired thirty-one. The quick arithmetic is it took us two years to hire forty-nine new positions. It's not gonna happen overnight, ladies and gentlemen, but if we don't sign that document. That money will evaporate, and it will go to Chicago, it will go to New York, San Francisco, Miami, Orlando, you pick your place. It'll go to some of those other places that are out there. And one other thing that I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention is that. Staff from times to time does work very closely together. This document that said we were awarded that grant hit the county commission's staff offices the same day it hit my office. And that was November second. And why it takes weeks to review something like that and get it through the process, I can't defend that, and I certainly can't answer that. Um, but my staff picked up the phone immediately and started doing the things they needed to do, and in fact, I reached out. To Mr. Howard and also to Commissioner Schlewa, and informed both of them. Within twenty-four hours of my notification receipt that we got that grant approved. So I don't know about what the staff did to inform the rest of the folks out there, but. You know, you can't get much more transparent than that, and sharing that information as quickly as possible with folks that are out there. But I do know there's some other inconsistencies that staff mentioned, uh, as we were going through this, uh, process and this discussion, and I sat back there patiently. Biding my time, because I do know that Colonel Witt and her team in the finance division in my agency has worked tirelessly. To ensure that we deliver the absolute best sworn law enforcement officers to support our citizens and their needs. And we've all agreed that public safety is job number one of government, and everything else falls in line after public safety. So I, I'd like for Colonel Witt to, uh, expand upon a couple of points, but also to correct a couple of things that were, uh, less than, uh. Represented accurately whenever the conversation was taking place and we were sitting in the back. Colonel Witt, I hope you can make it through this.
I'm sorry. Thank you, and all of you know that I was the one that presented on May eleventh, the stipulation about the cops grant. And it has always been that unknown of what we were gonna be awarded. And we s- we stood here and said that the maximum award was forty-four positions. And I vividly remember talking about the budget stipulations, also talking about impact fees, being able to be used for capital assets. And even a comment saying, if this happens, the unknown will find the money. And shockingly to all, and I didn't stand up here and lie to anybody, I was truthful in saying, I don't know, I, I can't. Provide to you what DOJ was gonna do, I can only tell you historically of what I recalled back in the late nineties, where we received ten. Positions through the cops grant. Um, so. We received forty-three positions, and. Now we move forward, effective on November second, the sheriff is correct that the county received this information as well, the same time as we did with this grant awarded. Um, notice. And then afterwards, our staff did contact DOJ several times to have a answering question sheet. Which on November sixth was provided to the county as well. Then other emails on the seventh, the thirteenth, the fifteenth, and the seventeenth were provided to the county as it related to the activation of the portal. To establish this account and create it with the signatures. As well as the grant awarded package, so everything should have been combined, combined with all these stipulations, and as of this date. A month later, more, um, the first step in that two-step process still has not been completed by the county. As far as the signature part of it, when I met with county staff last week on the seventh. I had the DOJ representative on speakerphone with four people in the room, and it is not accurate. That they did not say two sheriff's office employees can sign that document. Historically, um, even in two thousand and ten, when we applied for a cops grant at the agency. Sheriff Dossie and Chairperson Gary Brutel were the two signatures, so this is not uncommon practice, it is similar to other grants. That we apply for, like the JAG grant and other things of that nature, however, those certifications typically are. Hard copy, papered, signed, this cops grant absolutely requires it to be electronic. Not a paper certification, that is one of their stipulations. So. Um, with that process in the December seventh, the DOJ representative specifically said. The purpose of having a sheriff's office representative sign, in this case, my name was on there, because I did present it to the board instead of the sheriff. As well as the chair, chairman at the time, uh, which was Ms. Schlabah. So with that, she, when asked, she said, absolutely, the DOJ cops grant wants a high official. That was her word, high official from the county to sign, the purpose for that. Is not so much the reporting and the monitoring, uh, part of it, which I submitted a letter. After that meeting on December eighth, acknowledging that the sheriff's office has the full responsibility of the financial documentation and the monitoring of this grant. But the purpose of the county chairperson to sign this document is that the cops grant is saying, hey. We know that sheriff's offices don't give themselves the money, they want that partnership and that agreement from the county to say, yes, we went in front of the board, the board agreed. Which it was five to zero, um, with that acceptance, that the county acknowledges that when we start hiring, that. You are who we get the funds from, pretty much, that's why they want that acceptance from the county.
Madam Chair. Mr. Kennard. Can I interrupt for just a minute, because I'm getting two different stories here. Um, has anybody, um, from the sheriff's office or the county. Talked with that representative from DOJ, um, after, wh- what'd you say, December seven?
We met, uh, four of us, which was the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and Aaron, uh, through the, your financial department, and myself. Um, last week on December seventh. Our agency had been in communication numerous times with that DOJ representative. Uh, Jenny in the audience from our financial services department, and asked and posed that same exact question, and that same exact answer was provided, that yes. and asked and posed that same exact question, and that same exact answer was provided, that yes, indeed, one of those signatures has to be the county. Again, they termed it high official from the county because they were looking on, on the budgetary aspect of it, acknowledging that, yes, we were going to be funded. Because if you default on the grant, like we stated back in May 11th, that's not a good thing. Then pretty much you're losing your chances for future grant opportunities.
So, since December 7th, that's last?
Thursday.
Last Thursday was the last time anybody from the county spoke with this representative from DOJ? And what I heard this morning was that because we're two different entities, that this came from DOJ representative, was that because we are two different entities with two different tax ID numbers, that, uh, that the two signatures could, didn't necessarily have to, if I remember right, could come from the sheriff's office.
That was not-
She's saying yes, you're saying no.
No, sir. On, on my-
That is exactly what she said to us on the phone.
That is exactly what she said? Okay. If I, um, Madam Attorney, would you like to give the explanation that you gave to me? I'm sorry, Jeff, are you good? Just?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I wasn't. I wasn't present with the phone call.
No, but, um, you were, what you were telling me today is that that, um, that grant applicant, the grant document is essentially a, um, one-size-fits-all that a lot of times law enforcement is underneath the, um, for example, a city council, right? So Tampa Police Force, for example, is not a separate entity. This, and you are a constitutional office, and so you are a completely separate entity. And it's, I'm just, I've read the document, I am not comfortable signing it. Um, I'm comfortable trying to figure out a way to fund it, but I'm not comfortable signing it. So i- if you guys aren't going to sign it, then this conversation's probably over.
And, and as I explained to you, this is not unusual practice. Back when we've applied before, it had been a sheriff's office personnel and the chairman of the board. Um, I tried to reach out to that DOJ representative this morning. Unfortunately, she was in a meeting. And I would be more than happy to try to get her on the phone and have her on speakerphone in front of everybody.
But it still says under penalty of perjury, and I don't look good in orange. Um, I'm not gonna, I'm, I cannot sign off on documents that I am not privy to and do not fully understand and cannot verify. It's just not, it, it, it's just not good.
And again, that's not the purpose of it, and I, I would be more than happy to get her on the phone-
But it's a legal document. You know, it doesn't matter what people say verbally, it's a legal document is the issue.
So then I would raise the point, um, with other grants that you certify and that you sign on a document. You don't submit those reports either. We are the monitoring agency and we submit those financial reports. You don't do that with the other ones either. Right now, and you sign those.
Yes, ma'am.
Might I?
Please.
The last time, uh, I, I wasn't here when Sheriff Dossie was, was, uh, did the last COPS grant. So I wasn't the one reviewing the documents. I don't know what lawyer was here at the time. I can tell you, the last time we did, uh, a burn grant, both Mr. Batzel, on behalf of the sheriff, signed the certification that he had reviewed all of the sheriff's operations and that, uh, he was, he gave his legal opinion that the sheriff was complying with all those certifications. And the sheriff himself signed a document saying that he was complying with, um, very specific requirements under that related to, um, I don't want to, I don't, I can't remember whether it was ICE, ICE-type individuals or some, something along those lines. I know the sheriff signed the certification. Um, and we would not go forward until those certifications were signed, and I have copies of both those from Mr. Batzel. When, um, if we can back up a little bit about the timeline, uh, since it was stated that, you know, it took so long because it was in legal review. I just wanted to go through the timeline, um, of when, uh, I guess it was transmitted to the county, either the sheriff said the 2nd. I've found documents, uh, that it was transmitted on the 6th. I received the legal request on November 22nd, the day before Thanksgiving, at 1:26, asking for my input. The 23rd was a holiday, the 24th was a holiday, the 27th, which was Monday, we were in briefings all day. And the 28th, we were in a board meeting. So effectively, I got to it on the 29th and I responded on the 30th. So I don't know why it didn't get to me until November 22nd. But when that happened, I did go back and review those prior grants, and I did find the information from Mr. Batzel and from the sheriff. And when I responded to the legal request, I said, perhaps you can get an affidavit similar to what we've done before in these other grants from Mr. Batzel, if he's still the general counsel, and from the sheriff making those certifications. So I attempted to try to compare this COPS grant to those burn grants, which is what Colonel Witt is referring to. But in this case, when you look at the application, and I understand why the sheriff and Colonel Witt are asking for the board to sign these, uh, it is not a requirement because when you look at the application, an eligible entity is a local, state, and tribal law enforcement agency. We are not a law enforcement agency. The sheriff is a constitutional officer, and he is the chief law enforcement officer of the county. Therefore, I would state, under the requirements of the grant, regardless of what a woman on the phone says, the requirements of the grant and the award letter state that it can be signed by one person. One person. Now, I know Colonel Witt is saying she's previously signed something, which I think she signed previously, the application. What you're being asked for now is to sign the award letter, which they're asking for one person. I understand from Erin that during the telephone conversation, the woman on the phone said that she would prefer two. So at this point, it could be the sheriff and his chief financial person, or it can be the sheriff and, uh, Colonel Witt. Either of those two, I believe, under the grant application and the award letter would qualify. But certainly, you can sign it, just as they both can sign it.
And again, that, that is not what was stipulated twice to us. It's only one signature from both of those entities. And I can't answer your internal review because we are not the ones that ask for legal review, so that's on your side. I have no idea what happened with that. Um, and then the response of the legal review literally was just provided yesterday at 3:29 to your staff. With the deadline being this Friday for the DOJ grant. And that clearly was stated on November 2nd that we had 45 days to accept this award.
Can we, um, if you don't mind, can we get back to the financial aspect of this? Because Commissioner Schleba is leaving in 12 minutes. Yes.
I think there's a couple of things here. Number one, can you ask for an extension? I mean, if you didn't, if we didn't get this until November 17th.
Well, we technically received it November 2nd, was the award granted to us in the county. So they look at it at the date that they gave-
So can you ask for an extension to, to be able to come back?
I believe that was asked, and you should have had, which we provided, a questions and answer sheet that our staff did, that was provided to the county um, back on November 6th. So, and then it lists a whole bunch of stuff, especially about hiring. That was another question, uh, on their side. They expect us to hire as soon as possible, but no later than, uh, year 2025. Goes into other stipulations, but I think that the award acknowledgement has to be within the 45 days. The only extension is on the hiring part that, that you can ask for. Like if you're running into problems because you don't have enough people to hire, you can ask for an extension on the backend. But the 45 days is the limit of when you can accept the grant.
I guess, I guess, here's my, here's what I feel like I'm coming up with this. What, it, this is a learning experience. It seems like maybe in the future, whenever you're going to apply for a grant of this magnitude that needs this type of funding, we should all be in a room together somewhere. I mean, not me personally, but the administrator, the finances, you all, and know exactly what that means. Because if I look at, if you're at $39 million today, and we have to come up with 1.72394 in the first year, and then you, uh, and we're already talking about, and that would be in this, and then the next budget year, we have to come up with 1.83. And then you add, and I know you're going to say, I'm going to need 6% to cover just the basics. Just to cover your FRS. So now we're at, um, two, three. We're roughly 45, almost, yeah, 44 million.
Well, respectfully, respectfully, we did submit that. At the very beginning, we submitted that because we spoke about impact fees.
No, I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about the full budget effect. Not just your breakdown, I have that here. But I'm talking about what is going to cost overall, year over year over year. And by the time we get into this budget cycle, when we start to figure out this budget cycle, we're looking at $45 million to fund just this coming budget.
Well, unfortunately, you can only provide baseline because over and over, we say, we can't give you FRS data, we can't give you insurance data, year after year, that changes. And that was the result of when we were talking about that $2.5 million-
So let me, let me ask you this question. If we, if, you know what we collect in AdVorm, that's how we fund. How, tell me, give me a suggestion. How do we, how do we give you more than 50% of what we collect and still fund everybody else?
Again, we spoke about impact fees and other sales tax revenues and all that stuff, but I don't think it's my responsibility to tell you where to get the money from.
But you're asking for it.
Exactly. But your responsibility is to find the money.
I guess my point is, that's where I said we need to have a partnership. I, I, I mean, we work for the same people.
I'm all about partnerships, and I thought that's what we had because we all universally agreed, five commissioners and the sheriff, that we need more law enforcement officers out there supporting our citizens. And we've talked about, and we, we, we talked about it, uh, last year, that we need to take a good, hard look at the sales tax. Why is Citrus County the only county in the state of Florida that charges a 6% sales tax?
Totally agree, but Commissioner Schleba wanted to say something.
Okay, I, I just want to say something, and I'm very passionate about this. But you two know for a fact that three of us supported your budget completely. We want you to have what you need. But the pull is, where do we get the money? And in a perfect world, yes. When this grant thing came up, actually, when it came up, I'm like, oh, Lord, if we get that, if we get that grant. But it was just, I don't think we're going to get it, I don't think we're going to get it. You didn't know that, you've stated you didn't know for sure. I believe you that when you told us, we didn't know if we'd get it. But there's two things here. I don't think that Commissioner, um, Davis should, should be a part of signing this document. Sign it, let's move on. And then, let's figure out how many you're really going to ask for in the COPS grant, because it's two issues. We've, we've did the 10, wanted the 22, we did the 10. So does that get us to 34, 33?
No. No, it can't. You can't supplant. It's, it, we already identified in the fiscal year 22, 23 budget, that we needed 22 immediately to get after the number that we knew we were short for just patrol alone. So we, we funded only 10 of those 22 and got those into the pipeline. So that's there, that's our baseline. So the 44 goes on top of that, or the 43 goes on top of that, which gets us much closer to the baseline where we really need to, to be for serving our population today. So-
So do you hear what I'm saying? I, I want you to have those 43 people. I just don't know how to do it, and I think the MSTU is definitely something that we need to look at to try to figure this out and the sales tax and all that. But today, if you are going to ask for a vote, should Commissioner Davis sign this document? No, I think the sheriff, you should sign it and send it on, if that's what you're going to do.
Madam Chair, she had to sign the original grant application as our chair. And there's a, there's a mechanical process out there. And if I called DOJ and I hear it from the grant manager's mouth that I can sign that, I'd sign it in a heartbeat. And then I'd have to come back and beat you all up and say, I need the money to hire more deputies. I signed the grant. But that's, that's not the way the process has been explained to us. And I fully trust her. She has a badge and she's got a dedicated 36-year career in law enforcement, serving our citizens here. And if she says something happened, I'll take it to the bank and I'll take it to my grave that it did exactly the way she said it. And that's how it happened. And, and that, that's what great staff does, is get the work done for their leaders so they can focus on the other things at hand.
But I read the document myself, and I'm not comfortable signing it, is what I'm saying. So, again, I wasn't on the phone call, I didn't hear that, but what I, I have to go by what's in writing. And so, um, one thing I would say is that, uh, you have short-term memory about when you're supported. And Commissioner Schleba is absolutely right. We backed you on the budget already. We want you to, you have heard us say repeatedly, you need more officers. We know you need more officers. We've got to figure out a way to get there, right? And then you got up here and you also said that no one talked about the grant money. I didn't say it as politically eloquently as you did, but I absolutely said, that's federal money that will, that leverages what we're putting in. So I did acknowledge the fact that that is really important. I also said I was absolutely delighted. I was also had a, oh, God, what do we do now moment, but I was absolutely delighted that you got 43 of the 44. That's amazing. So, again, I will say, what is the dead minimum that we can get by with on this first year to keep this moving forward? And then we will try to figure it out and put in other funding mechanisms by next year, by the next budget season, hopefully, that can get you the officers that you need. So work with us.
Oh, I'm all about that. I'm all about working with you.
You know, taking money out of the reserves, taking money out of road resurfacing are, are two very costly measures, short-term thinking costly measures for us. So, that's why, that's why I am digging my heels in, is because when we re- we reduce reserves, that costs us more in bond rates, right? When we let our roads continue to not be fully funded every year, that costs us more in resurfacing. Now, there is a point that Commissioner Kennard made that maybe the, the true-up would cover this. But, you know, I would need to hear from staff what they think about the timing on the road resurfacing and whether the true-up would cover it. That is an interesting idea. I will grant Commissioner Kennard that. But what is the dead minimum, and, and, and point of clarification, of the 10, you said none of them would qualify for COPS because they're already advertised positions? I thought we had a-
No, we hired six before the end of the fiscal year. We've already got more in the pipeline that applied before the grant was awarded.
Okay, so none of the 10 qualify for COPS?
And, and you can't do it until the document is executed, it hasn't been executed yet, the award hasn't been executed.
Right, 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 of course, of course. But I didn't know that they were in the pipeline. That was a point of clarification that I needed to ask, that's all. Not fighting you, I'm just trying to make sure I have all the data points.
Madam Chair.
Um, yes.
Trying to help you guys.
Please.
Because I know Commissioner Schleba has to get out of here, and I understand the grant has to be signed, uh, expeditiously. The sheriff and someone else from his organization can sign the award letter, and then if, for example, the award needed to be changed from, say, 43 to 33 to encompass the 10, they can request an award amend, or a grant amendment, or an award amendment at some point in the future. It'll get the document signed, and then you can deal maybe with these other issues.
And, and Madam Chairman, that's what I was asking you. I'm not saying the 10 would qualify in that 43. I'm saying, could, would you amend the amount of the 43 to the 33? But you're saying you need, you need essentially 53 sworn officers.
From where we're at today, we need 70 more to meet our current population and the call volume that we have. 70 more deputies. We need about 45 more just in patrol alone.
So-
So-
I'm sorry that I have to leave. I'm so sorry. And boy, would I like to not sit in that chair and get that treatment and sit here and argue with you. Yes, I would love to do that, sit with you and argue. But I think that if you're going to ask me right now, I think let the sheriff's department, the sheriff's office sign the document. And then can we then talk further about how we're going to get him the deputies that he needs and where that money is coming from other than road resurfacing? I like the true-up money, and, um, and again, I want you to have these employees. I'm just at a wall of how to find the money.
So would it be, Madam Chair, the board's opine that if we amended it to the 33 that Commissioner Schleba just suggested, and we notified DOJ that, hey, well, I know we, we got awarded 43, but we're going to amend it to 33 right now? And then we'll apply for a COPS grant a couple more years down the road to see if we can harvest some more of that money. Would the board support 33 if we amended the grant?
I think you have support for 43, but we need time-
We should have support for 70, but we don't have the money, and I know that, I'm very kind of innocent.
But we don't have the money for 43 right now either. But we don't have the money for forty-three right now either, I'll, I would say, sign the document, worst-case scenario, if they, if it gets bounced. Because the wrong two people signed it, it'll come back before us, you'll get an automatic extension, if, in case you're correct, okay? But get it, get it in process, and then we need to take some time to figure out. How many we can give you right now, perhaps with true-up, et cetera, and. That, I mean, literally, this, this was first brought up at my briefing yesterday. So all five of us are getting, being T-boned at the intersection, trying to do this, and poor, open to the public, I am so sorry.
So, Madam Chair, can I suggest that, I'll, I'll make the phone call to DOJ, and if they say, Sheriff, you cannot sign. That document in two places, cause she's an extension of me.
But your chief, but, but your chief financial officer could be.
Is also an extension of me. So if they say. Two people from your agency can't sign it, it has to be another high-ranking county official. Then can I call you and say, hey, I'll walk over with the DOJ on my.
You're gonna have to get me real comfortable about that, because it's per, it says perjury, Sheriff. And I know you would love to arrest me and put me in handcuffs at some point in your jail, but no.
Madam, Madam Chairman. So, uh, do we need to vote on who's signing this? So that I can. What, 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 where are we?
Madam Attorney, can you bring this in for a landing? What we need to do?
I believe the request is for, for one of y'all to sign it, so if none of y'all are gonna sign it, I don't think there's any action that the board needs to take. Unless you all want to take some action saying, we're not gonna sign it. It's on the agenda for authorization for the chairman to sign it. Among other things.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, the sheriff signs this document and finds out if he can do that. Otherwise, you know. We're out of luck, cause I'm not gonna support the sheriff signing it.
You mean me?
Yes, you're the chair.
Chair signing it.
I'm making a motion to have the sheriff's office sign this.
Or other representative.
From his office, that's my motion.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Schleball, second by Commissioner Baze, um. Commissioner Finnegan was before you, I'm sorry.
Did this piece of paper come from your grant? It says just grants rolls at the top of it, this is in my.
That's from the DOJ's website.
Okay, so not pertaining to this grant, because everyone's talking about the two people, and this says authorized representative. One to two per application and award, but it's not this award, I'm not sure why we got this then.
Madam Chair, may I?
Uh, Commissioner Canard was next, unless you wanna.
I was gonna answer something that Commissioner Finnegan, the grant award has only one signature block on it, for one signature. So I was told that during the phone conversation, it was brought up that this grant required two. So I don't know why the document has only one signature block.
Could government make this any more difficult, I'm just saying. Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, I don't know that, I mean, do we have the authority to tell the sheriff's office to sign this, like the motion says? I think that the action by this board, if we wanted to. Should be. Sheriff, if you want this grant, sign it, if not, let it expire. Or we can say, if the sheriff signs this grant. And ultimately, it gets kicked back that it needs a board signature. Is this board gonna authorize the chair to sign it, I mean, that, we, we can authorize our own to sign it, we can't tell them, sheriff's office to sign it.
I agree with you, yes.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
So you wanna amend your motion?
Yes, to what he said.
Can, can I read something to you?
Yes, I'm just looking at the clock for Schleball.
So, from the US Department of Justice. COPS website. It says, who should sign the award document for our agency? The authorized representative of the authorized. Are the authorized officials who have ultimate and final responsibility for all programmatic and. Financial, uh, direction regarding the award of this grant. For law enforcement agencies, COPS office awards require that both the top law enforcement executive. E.G. Chief of Police, Sheriff or equivalent, and the top government executive, E.G. Mayor, Board Chairman, or equivalent, sign the award document.
Where is that from?
The Department of Justice, uh, website.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that, but I he- hear what our county attorney is saying, and. Just as you're gonna listen to your employees, I'm gonna listen to mine, and I, we have a motion on the floor, did you amend your second? To what he said?
Was it Commissioner Finnegan that said? Somebody's, or Commissioner Canard suggested that the. You leave it up to me when we have, we have a couple more days.
If ultimately, the grant requires, um. The chair to sign it, does this board want to authorize the chair to sign it?
And also authorize me to say no if I'm not comfortable legally? Cause it, it does say personally on there.
Yeah.
I mean, would you wanna be in the chair position for that?
Well, and if that happens, then I think you need the certifications and assurances signed under oath by the sheriff and his counsel.
Okay.
Just like they did on the other, but I'm not saying that I'm comfortable with you signing that, because it says personally, and I would argue to the sheriff. Uh, in response to what the sheriff said is, yes, if there is a town council, or there is a form of government where there is a mayor. Or a town council where the sheriffs, or the police department is under that governmental entity, it is appropriate to have the highest. Um, person within the government, but in this, in this case, he's a separate constitutional officer. His office is completely separate from yours, so I think you have to read that document, not in a vacuum, but the fact that it, it, it applies. Countrywide, and there are different organizations.
Okay. So amend the motion to basically. You do what you want, in terms of signing it, give me the authority. To sign it or not sign it, as I see fit, working with Madam Attorney. No, you have to give the chair the authority to sign for the board, or not sign.
I just, I don't, I think with that, uh, the legal term, personally, I don't think you should sign it.
I'm, I'm aware of that, and I'm still heavily leaning to no, but we need, we have some time this week. To figure this out and get real answers.
My motion would be, I don't think, uh, my motion is that the board not sign the document, have the sheriff. If he sees fit to sign it, and if he finds out he needs another signature, then we're gonna have to deal with that. Period, that's my motion.
I wouldn't support that.
I would just ask that it say the sheriff or hi- someone in his office, because he may want someone else in his office.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair, so basically, we're at the beginning motion that you are.
Apparently.
Initial, okay, and one more question. Can I get clarification on the motion, because she didn't state E sixteen, A, B, C, and D? No?
This is completely, uh, outside of what's printed on the agenda, this is a completely different motion.
Motion approve this sheriff's signing. With the other representatives from the sheriff's office.
If he sees fit to signing it, I can't tell him what to do.
Let me, let me get the clerk, and then Commissioner Finnegan, then Commissioner Canard. Okay, approve and authorize the chairman to create an account with the DOJ as an authorized representative and approve the COPS grant award. This is not required for the sheriff's office to accept the grant award per DOJ. So approve and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of support for submission to DOJ regarding the cash ma- cash match. Also not required to accept the grant per DOJ. Provide staff direction regarding the number of positions to budget, and then D, approve related budget transfer. For whatever number of positions approved by the board, not to exceed six point two million. Commissioner Finnegan, or I, you need the motion clarified. Commissioner, um, Schleball?
It, it's not following what is on here, my motion is specifically if the, I, my motion is for the board not to sign. Uh, the documentation to create an account with the Department of Justice, to have the chair sign that, to have, if the sheriff wants to sign it. Or his.
Representative.
Representative, then that's, that's up to the sheriff, but my, uh, that's my motion.
Commissioner Baze?
I made my second to that.
Commissioner Finnegan.
As a board member, I think that if the DOJ requires. This board to sign with our duly-elected. Badge-wearing, law-abiding sheriff, then I think that we should do that. If it, if that is the requirement of this, how, how do we not sign on with our sheriff? And there, there's no way I would ever imagine that if for some unforeseen reason, some checkbox isn't marked correctly. On a report, that they're gonna come try to arrest anybody on this board. Uh, it would have to be some horrible, horrible, incoherent things happening before that happened, so. Uh, for us not to get behind our sheriff for a signature, I, I just don't understand.
Commissioner Canard?
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start with, um, there was some brief discussion about would the board. Um, agree to thirty-three positions. Um, and then we started back in this road of, down this road of. Whether or not we wanted the chair to sign it and so forth, so we're still talking about those thirty-three positions. Rather than the forty-three positions. Uh, that gives, that gives a significant increase to the size of, of the sheriff's office. Um. Maybe gives the board a bit of breathing room here, and I do think that, um. Hopefully, this motion fails, and we can offer up a little bit more of a simplified version. That gives you some wiggle room, allows the sheriff to move forward, and they can transmit a signed document by Friday.
Wiggle room, meaning the one, the su- the suggestion I had, which was to give me the opportunity to sign or not sign?
Yes, if, if, if the board is okay with thirty-three positions, let's handle this in, 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 um, two parts. If the board is okay with thirty-three positions, then that, then that's decided, now the question is, who's gonna sign the document? And what this board is saying, sheriff, the sheriff or his representative, sign the document, transmit it. Um, we're gonna support you for the thirty-three positions over the next three years. If DOJ turns around and says, no, you didn't get, uh, you, we require. That the board chair sign it, and this is X, Y, and Z. Ultimately, if you're not comfortable when those conversations are happening over the next three days. You have, you have, if you are comfortable, then you've got the ability to, this board has given you the authorization to sign it. If you're not comfortable, then you walk away from it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that trust.
That will be, that will be my motion, if the current one.
I personally am for the forty-three, if we can figure out how to get it funded, but anyway, go ahead.
So can, can you say what you're, what you're thinking, one more time?
That, um. The number of positions that we're authorizing is thirty, thirty-three. And that, um. The board, the board gives the chair the authorization to sign, if she's comfortable. If it's required by DOJ, to start with, sheriff or his representative. Um, should sign it at their discretion, if they wanna submit it by Friday, they should sign it and submit it, if DOJ, if DOJ ultimately says. No, you have to have, uh, the chair sign it, then. There's gonna have to be some discussions with the chair alone, uh, or chair and our legal representative. Um. And to get her to a point where she's comfortable with it, and this board has authorized her. To go ahead and sign it, or if she's not comfortable, she doesn't sign it.
Okay, um, do you feel comfortable with that, Chairman?
Yes.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are you willing to be unilaterally responsible, either to take the accolades or the crap? Of your decision, of whether or not you're going to sign that document, just something to consider before you agree to that.
That's not legal input, that's six commissioner input.
Well, I, I'm sitting here and. I've been told to.
I'm.
Be more active.
No.
I have developed not only crocodile skin, but a pretty good flame retardant suit after three years on this job, so I'll be okay.
I, I just wanna say one other thing, you know, Commissioner Finnegan brought up, and she said, well, we support the sheriff. It's not about supporting the sheriff, there, but there are things that we are not privy to, that is in your department, and rightly so. But there are, what I was briefed on, what I have looked into, is that. Just for this to be signed by Friday, that. There are at least ten federal statutes that you have to be accountable to, right? In this DOJ application. And that's why I'm not comfortable with having the chair sign it, just sign it, see if it ha- goes, that's my suggestion. And that's why, yeah, i- in a perfect world. It, we knew everything that you had, and if you're accountable, but you don't have to tell us if you're, if you are or not. You don't have to tell us anything. That's why I don't feel comfortable, and that's why I'm told that you can sign this, so, you're saying.
Saying have him sign it, or his representative sign it, and send it?
Yes, that's what I said, that's what my motion said.
Hang on. And if it doesn't fly, if DOJ turns around and says, no, you have to have. Your chair sign it, and this is why, then the chair will be brought into those conversations. And either, either DOJ can make her feel comfortable with signing it. Or they don't make her comfortable and she walks away from it. But all we're doing is giving her the authorization to sign it, if she so chooses.
You, you left out that little step in there before, and I like that, that's, that's.
So if you would amend my motion to have, to move forward and have the sheriff sign if he sees fit. And that the chairman. If they come back, the DOJ, and says they need the chairman's signature, that it's the chairman has, will be called into a meeting, and she can decide. At that point, if she signs. You feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes, number of positions.
Um. I, I, I said thirty-three because of the ten, I, I want to have, I want you to have what you need. So I think that's getting in the weeds right now.
Maximizing the grant funding to do forty-three is the right fiscally.
So can I respond to that?
But we can, we can downgrade that number, we could do it in, on amendment later, not now, correct? Yes, then leave it at forty-three.
So if I can respond to that and tell you that I've already signed and executed on our side, that's been done. From the DOJ, they told us twice, the next step is the county head official, they've already told us. We cannot have another signature.
Cool, that sounds like Steve Howard.
We, and it, and it could be, and it could be, so I'm telling you that that answer is going to be no from them. Um, that is why I was the one that suggested in that meeting to call the person. And have her on speakerphone, so everybody could hear that, I'll be more than willing to do that again, Madam Chair, if you wanna hear the same exact thing. I can set up a meeting with you tomorrow, or do whoever.
We have a, we have a, a workable motion, so hopefully we can. And so she can go, pardon?
The amended motion has not been seconded.
I'll second.
Well, Baze had the original second. Okay.
I'll second it.
Alright.
Okay. I, I have to leave, I'm sorry, so do you not want my vote?
Yeah, we, I, I need to call the bill.
Are you kidding me?
Can I?
I have been for five minutes trying to get your attention, I understand you have to leave, it was at three-thirty, I have a question. About the motion, so we can vote.
Okay, good.
The motion had said thirty-three, it's went back and forth, if you can amend that later, I don't know that we should keep. Uh, an approval of thirty-three in.
The number is not part of the motion.
That, Chi- Canard tried to get that in there, but I just said, I don't think that, that's. Yeah.
I just asked, I was trying to. Trying to get some clarification on where, what number.
And I still have to do, um, comment from the public on this, do I, yes? Please don't, please don't comment, if you can avoid it, um, would anybody, cause I gotta get her out of here and get this vote done, would anybody like to speak on this matter? Steve, I. Then hu- then run, come on, man, she's gotta go to radiation. Steve, I, then hu- then run. Come on, man, she's gotta go to radiation.
Okay, from a layperson's stand of view, Stephen Schwartz Pine Ridge, from a layperson's stand of point of view, what I see here is they are not under your jurisdiction, and that is a focal point of what your decision is going to be. Because if you don't have control over what they do, they should be allowed by DOJ to sign it themselves, and that's my opinion in this. So the answer has to come back, you needed it writing, not by word of mouth. It used to be a handshake, and that would suffice. It no longer is. Anytime you go into an attorney's office, everything is in writing. Let DOJ put it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Janet Barak, I think before you signed any of the grant stuff, someone should have read the fine print. And the fact that the citizens of Citrus County, if this goes through, will be on the hook for more money, in significant amounts. And to suggest that you play around with money and take it from this to that till you chew up in discussion up there, that's very, very discouraging. We finally, maybe, and I say maybe, have the money to do some of the roads. I know the sheriff needs, needs people, because I know how long it takes for a sheriff's therapist to get where he has to get. Cause there are not enough out there. But you can't be playing around with the money in the accounts that's already designated, and you can't expect the citizens to continue to be able to pay their property taxes. So, I like what you finally came up with. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Janet. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor?
Would you like me to reiterate the vote that we have since it's been amended?
Yes, please. Thanks for keeping us straight.
Okay, we started with the motion for the board, hold on, sorry. Motion for the board not to sign, but to approve the sheriff to sign the cops grant award if he sees fit to sign with other representatives in the sheriff's office. Then the motion was amended for the board is not to sign the cops grant award if the sheriff or his representatives want to sign that as up to sheriff. Then I had the men, motion was amended to if DOJ requires the county to sign, the chair is authorized to sign at her discretion.
Good? That's the final motion?
You good?
Bless you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion, uh, motion carries four-one.
Madam Chair.
And you wonder why I call this train wreck Tuesday every once in a while?
If, if I may add to the vote, because you were trying to hurry to get Commissioner Barr to the vote.
Of course.
The reason for nay was, um, I just think bad policy in a motion to have, not just for this, but set a precedent that at the chair's discretion, and not meeting you, any chair in the future,
Of course.
that the chair just at his or her discretion can sign or not sign something. I think that's a board decision, so that will clarify my nay vote. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, sincerely.
I, I wanna ask one clarification. Was that just for signing, or was that for funding?
That was just for signing.
So it has nothing to do with funding?
Nothing to do with funding. The funding will determine, um, whether we go for the full forty-three or not, or have to do an amendment. We'll have to figure that out. We, we are looking at so many different funding alternatives right now, um.
I, I mean, if you move forward on what this is, let's just say we did it all in one fell swoop. You just signed on for fifty million dollars.
Yep, and to Janet.
But if, uh, but I, what I'm saying is, over the, the course of that, you're not going to fund it all in one fell swoop. So you're gonna, and I'm being very conservative, what they ask, which is six percent. You're gonna drag that out, and every year that budget amount is gonna go up, and then you're gonna add that on. That, this, I'm sorry, I think we're way out of our league. I, I'm gonna tell you, I think unless this board wants to commit to an MSTU and get it in line, and let them go sell it to the public, and let them decide that that's what they wanna do, you can count me out.
Um, well, number one, to Janet's point, it actually caused, if, considering that we need that many more deputies and more, it's actually less money. It's not costing us more money, it's costing us less more, if that makes any sense, not as much more. Um, secondly, I do think the MSTU is very interesting on our very long budget, um, presentation. And that would put it into the voters' hands to, to decide to fund fully or not fully the, um, sheriff's department, so. Um, we don't know what our tax rolls are gonna be next year. We know we got a huge bump this year. It still wasn't enough to cover all the, the backlog of stuff that we had not fully funded in the past. So, we have a lot of unanswered questions, so I feel you, but a lot of this will come up in the coming year budget cycle, which I cannot wait for. Yes, sir.
I'll make one parting comment as well is it's a lot of money, but we have the money. It's just a matter of our priorities. Where does this lie in our priority list? You know, if we're going to put, uh, two or three or four other things ahead of it, then yes, we have to make up that difference. Or you move public safety and getting our sheriff's office deputies up to the numbers it should be up the list of priorities. We've got the money. It's just, now, I don't believe it's where it should be on our priority list right now.
Well, it, almost fifty percent of our budget, it is pretty high up on the priority list. I would say it's number one. And as government, um, that is our job, is public safety and paving roads. Those are our two primary jobs.
Looks safe and infrastructure.
Yep, so.
All right, motion approved, E one.
Oh, my gosh.
Second.
Can you run it?
I'm sorry, we, we haven't done.
We have to go back to open the public.
Open the public, and I was going to ask for a matter of, uh, professional courtesy. We have, um, some individuals in the audience that have been waited a long time for E ten, if there was any consideration to move E ten further up.
Is it gonna be fast, because the public has also been waiting a long time, but it, it's a fast one?
I believe it's fast.
Okay. My apologies, I didn't know about that, I would have moved it up, cause I knew the sheriff would take a while. Okay, call E ten?
Motion approved, E ten.
I'm going to second it with, is that A and B?
Yes, A and B.
But I am gonna have my two cents about this.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kennard, and the second by Commissioner Baze. Any?
I'm, yeah, I have, I want my two cents.
You're gonna get it as soon as I, uh, would anyone like to speak on E ten from the public? Going once, going twice? Okay, board comments, go. Commissioner Baze.
This is one of those times that is so disappointing. When I served on the board from twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen, we won accolades for what we had done for that corridor. People talk about every day what we, we, the growth that's coming to this county, and we don't want it. We had access management plans in there, and one of the main things was we had regional storm water drainage. And that's what this is really all about. We had an opportunity to do something that was very good for the environment of our community. We had an opportunity that we could have had regional storm water drainage with harvesting for reuse. And because this was taken out of our comp plan, we had the people that are here actually donated this right away to get this done, and because we failed to act on it, they have now rescinded that offer, and it's going back, and this is something that we will lose forever. And it's, it breaks my heart. It's so disappointing, because this is one of those things that was so good for our community. And, and it's a lost opportunity, and it was something that somebody else, out of the graciousness of their heart, was giving to us for the betterment. So, not only are we paying several million dollars more for the widening of that road, but we also lost a great opportunity to do something important for our environment.
Thank you for saying that, and I concur. You know, I wasn't on the board that put all that in motion, obviously, but, um, I know the board that was seated right after you, and, um, wanna understand, it was sort of purposely torpedoed. Um, any comments? Okay, I already did open the public, board comment, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries three-zero, we'll get Kennard's vote when he comes back. And, um, he is going to come back, yes. And, well, I have to go too, so like, um, you're number two? Guys, I am, to the public that is here to speak, I am so sorry that this has taken so long. It is just, like I said, I, I nicknamed some of these Tuesdays Trainwreck Tuesdays, you never know. Okay, so, there is, since you're new, I haven't seen your face before, I'm gonna tell you that there is a speaker in the bathroom. So I'm not running away, I will hear what you're saying, but it's not a two-way speaker, there is no microphone, just so you know.
Aye.
Yes, thank you. You're in charge.
All right, number two.
I'm Robert Levek. I live on the north side of New Florida Avenue on the west ha- west side. My wife and I, Colleen, have lived there for twen- going on twenty-three years. And a lot of traffic has gone from Brentwood down into Beverly Hills on New Florida Avenue. But the problem arise is that there's a lot of elderly people that use three and four-wheeled electric vehicles to get through there, and they used to get stuck. Well, the wife and I and friend next door, Gary, used to be out there sometimes three times a day trying to get them unstuck. So Gary and I, he had to leave. We went down and bought three hundred and fifty dollars plus of pressure-treated plywood and lined a path for them to be able to walk, to ride on to get through onto the paved New Florida Avenue. Well, my wife went out to, with the dog the other day, says, it's gone. I says, what do you mean it's gone? It's on Beverly Hills property, I mean, on this side of the power lines. I says, it can't be gone. It was. Well, supposedly, the people that put those huge boulders, which were, uh, lime rock, some three feet in diameter, four feet in diameter, they put them on that side of the power lines, blocking the whole road. So nobody could get through no matter what, where it was open before. Well, this morning, at about twenty, oh, quarter of eleven, some noise back there, cause I'm right there, uh, more heavy equipment. They were putting more boulders back there. Well, I had asked them before, uh, wha- what, what you guys doing? You work for Brentwood? I worked for Tamposy Brentwood. He says, this is Brentwood property, it belongs to Tamposy, from the power lines over. I says, well, there's a road that stopped, New Florida Avenue's been there for twenty, twenty-something years. If it continued to go right into the road over in Brentwood, well, that's all Brentwood property. The county don't own that. I says, don't own what would have been the rest of the road? You've got a lift station over, oh, we gave, uh, the county permission to put that there. I'm saying to myself, something's wrong here. Anyway, they keep getting stuck, we have to bail them out all the time. And that three hundred and fifty dollars just disappeared. That was on, we, we put down there for these people. That's what I had to say about it. Because this gentleman has the, uh, the paperwork for it, uh, all the pictures of what happened.
Thank you.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, they tried to go to Winn-Dixie, and he had mentioned it, Winn-Dixie, to pharmacy, to banks, everything.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, we can look in, I know we saw that whole Metacross extension, um, case probably ten months ago? Is that what they're talking about?
Brentwood.
Or Brent, I'm sorry, Brentwood, not Metacross. Sorry, it's been a long day already. I was actually picturing Brentwood when I said the wrong word. Um, is that that side fire access thing?
I don't know anything.
In any events, staff will look into it, okay? Um, are you number three? Of course you are, cause you were here early. Thanks for being on your feet, Janet. Number four, you're, you're on deck, whoever you are.
Janet Barak, Citrus Springs resident. Okay. Numbers for open to the public are not needed. Okay, people need to learn how to read the agenda and see where open to the public is, and if there are any time certance prior to open to the public. This has been the procedure for at least as long as I have been coming to the meetings, which is getting close to the twenty-year point. Okay, we have nice seats, you watch the agenda, it says open to the public. If you're listening to what the chair says, we're gonna pull this forward, or we're gonna not, not pull something forward, you need to check, check it out, are there presentations? All you have to do is watch. These lovely green sheets are up here, you just take one, fill it out. We don't need numbers. Anyhow, do they have numbers at the post office? No, you stand online. I don't think they got numbers at the bank either. You go in there and you stand online. And guess what? The grocery store definitely doesn't have numbers. So the thing is, you need to be patient and kind when you come to speak at open to the public. You just wait your turn. If you wanna stand, fine, that's your choice. I don't do that if you watch every time, and I get to come up here a whole lot, but I really do sit till I see there's only one or two people. Common sense. Okay, next, speed limit on four-eighty-six. It should be left alone on two hundred from Ocala up, it's fifty miles an hour. It's been fifty miles an hour since they widened it a few years back, and that's prior to two thousand and three, okay? Before you decide to make any decisions on changing speed limits, maybe you should get some data. How many actual accidents have occurred from forty-one to forty-four? Since we changed the speed limit to fifty, since it was changed to fifty, okay? And take that data and say, okay, now, let's open up our small that's opening, which was now getting a new, an extra wider lane for turning. And give that six months or so, and see if it does increase the accidents. Changing that speed limit will only get people aggravated, and they will not appreciate it, and maybe you will cause accidents. Pine Ridge Golf Course was meant to be a golf course. Okay, there are plenty of undeveloped lots, single-family houses can be built on in Pine Ridge. Don't change the original design just because the developer wants it that way. However.
I'm, I'm sorry, y- you guys are gonna hear this in quasi-judicial. Janet, please, you know better.
Anyhow, thank you very much for the audit today. It was nice to see how we're going to be losing money with the MS.
Hello, sorry for the wait. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes, watch the clock, please.
Brenda Killian, and I'm up here to speak for my mother, Twilight Enik. We live in Inverness Four. We are on East Taper at the top of the hill. We have one side of our property where the water comes down, we have a gully that's four, almost five feet deep. And it's just, every time it rains, it just keeps going down and down and down further. All the sand goes down below us, three houses below us, actually four, get flooded. It's, it's horrible. And we, we, the backyard is just a really steep hill. There is nothing we can do with it. And from the day they graded that and made a big berm at the, at the back, it, the next day, it just rained like crazy. And it just started washing away. Now what are we supposed to do with our backyard? I, we, we're at a loss. They need to regrade it, they need to fill in the gullies. And I, I don't know who needs to. And I, I don't know who needs to do that, county, because county is ones that have neglected to do drainage. If we had drainage, that would have never happened. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Yes, sir. I was.
You know, I need to say, sir, Madam Chairman, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Um, my, my comments are gonna be brief, I won't use three minutes. They're directed at Mr. Howard and Commissioner Baze, and Mr. Cheek, if he's here, I don't know him yet. I'm new here uh to Citrus County, so thank you for that warm welcome, my, it is nice here. What I, what I've already done is contacted your offices and left a voicemail and a text, we're trying to get some things.
Thank you, um, I need your name for the record, and you are supposed to actually, even though you've put them on notice, you address me as the chair. It's the, it's the protocol.
Uh, my name is Tom, Tom Furo. Um, so anyways, we're gonna do some, we have a planned project over in Terra Wood. And we would like their help on trying to figure out the best way to kind of uh, come up with a plan and then a procedure to make it happen. So what I was hoping to do today is come here and get educated. I did.
How's that working out?
Yeah, the government's fast action, um, we're gonna get it done. Um, it'll happen, but what I, I just was hoping to do a kind of a name-based recognition. And look forward to working with you, hopefully during or right after the holidays, and see if we can get that project. So thank you for your time. You got a minute and forty seconds, take a deep breath, relax.
Well, what number were you, four? Five, number six, go on your feet. Undelay, undelay. I'm sorry, if you can't laugh at this job, you're, you'll just cry.
My name is Fay LaRice, and um. I'm talking about Inverness, Inverness Villages Four. We uh, were led to believe that the land, in the landowners meeting, that they would maintain the roads for the first two years. And Swift Mud would um, put um limestone on these roads for eight hundred dollars. Now Anton's attorney told us in a meeting that we could put in burns and drain the water off of our property. In the sales office, there were maps that indicated where retention ponds would be. And it seems that these properties at home uh, had, they, homes were permitted to be built on them. And um, and so now, they want the money, I guess, to buy those homes that should have never been permitted anyway. And um, they were um, I don't know how we as, as buyers. Were supposed to know that we were supposed to um, check on all this stuff that normally is provided. But anyway, uh, I spoke with Tina Williams in the building and planning concerning the drainage and the retaining ponds. Back in twenty twenty-one. And she referred me to Amber, who was the planner of the day. And I was told that no permit could be issued without draining and drainage and retention in place, that's what I was told. And um, when, then they returned my call, and I was later told that the site had to be twelve inches above the grade of the road. And it seems to me that contrary to what Mr. Kitchen, a former commissioner, said, that it wasn't just us making a bad real estate deal. It was the county issuing these permits. And I had recently got from paying my taxes, a copy of the permit search portal, and on page two, at the bottom of the page. It states that the land, land section stormwater was approved for my property. So wouldn't you think that it was approved if you bought that house and you were paying the money on it? This house uh, was declared at a hundred and ninety thousand. Now they're wanting a hundred and nine thousand dollars to put in the drainage per homeowner? The man across the street told me he paid a hundred and fifty for his. So you're almost wanting um, as much as the house is worth to fix the thing. Yet we're still paying property taxes anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars to basically three thousand per house. And if you figure that out over a um. Three hundred homes, three fifty homes, you're looking at about eight to ten million dollars over a ten-year period. Now, I feel like the county was complicit in this, since they issued the permits. Unbeknownst to most of us who thought that that was, you know, done.
Thank you ma'am, we respond to everyone after everyone's done, so. You're number six, is there a number seven, or did? Nope, go on, anyone else?
Go on to number eight, I believe, that goes up to twelve, you said?
Are you number eight, Steve? Okay. Is there a number nine?
Yes, there is.
Okay, good.
Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge. Commissioners, I've been coming to these meetings since the vote on the Ozello campground. It is a delight to see that at least three of you have the desire to keep the Citrus County, the nature coast. By preserving its charm and nature as outlined in your mission statement and codes. I'm sensing that some of you would have voted differently on the seven-eleven Meadowcrest, the Ozello RV campground. Your vote not to allow the dividing of the car wash plot four ninety-one, on four ninety-one. Is similar to the proposal by Mr. Dix to cha- change the public offering and master plan of Pine Ridge Estates. The county has enough areas in Central Ridge already available.
Mr. Schwartz.
For high and.
It, you, you, you really don't wanna talk about Pine Ridge before the Pine Ridge hearing, because they're gonna, you, you really don't wanna disqualify them from making a decision.
That's not disqualifying them, because they've gotten letters, and please stop my time, but. They've, they, they, they've gotten letters about these things, so they're already aware of it. And as I get down to the bottom um, of my statement, you will see that I have a right. As a resident, I can talk about any county issue in the past, present, or future.
Except matter.
At a public meeting that has, or will affect me and the community. And unless you can show me a, a, a specific code that says that I cannot talk about it quasi, because it hasn't come up. Then I have a right to talk about it.
Suffice it to say, I disagree with Mr. Schwartz.
And you have that right to disagree.
I believe all four of us will not respond and comment.
I'm not asking them to respond, and I don't wa- I don't expect that, and I wrote that this way. And I actually did two separate letters, because this is the uptake to what I'm about to read later, which is the more important. What we need is attainable housing for the workforce where there already is infrastructure, like a dilapidated plaza. Or adjacent to the Sun Coast Parkway that are similar to the apartments on Forest Ridge next to the elementary school. Today I am dressed as if it was the public hearing for the Pine Ridge Golf Course to be held on January ninth. Unfortunately, I will be unable to attend, as I have plans to be out of town, which were made in September. I would have canceled these plans for any other reason, except that January ninth is Betsy's and my thirtieth anniversary. Please listen to the residents who will be there that day, as if it is directly affecting you personally. As I know you will all be tired, and there will be a lot of speakers. In the end, your decision will be based on the legal issues of the LDC, the public offering, and the master plan. Did Mr. Dix purchase the plan in an ethical manner? I will be giving you a copy of this, of the letter, and some documents to defer, to refer to at the public hearing. As a resident, I can talk about any issue, past, present, or future. Mr. Dix and his attorney can respond if you choose to ask him my questions or claims at that public meeting on January ninth. You will know you have made the right decision when there is peace in your heart. May the light of source energy, God, guide you in your decision. If you, I wish you all a happy holiday and a healthy new year.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Carmen Kubitschek, Inverness Village Four. I wanna thank you for allowing us to um, come and speak. As the previous speakers and residents from Inverness Village Four, I've been at this now for two years. Rebecca Baze, Commissioner Baze, was previously a commissioner, so she's aware, she says this is a hot mess. That doesn't even address the problems that we're seeing. Commissioner Finnegan is new to this, so this is um, she's going through the motions, just like you all did. I really appreciate um, Canard, the uh, Commissioner Davis, and Doctor, and Commissioner Baze coming out and talking to us. But this doesn't address the problems that we have. And the thing that gets me um, overly concerned is the fact that Swift Mud has told us that we cannot touch the roads. We don't have the infrastructure. I do agree with um, Ms. Ba- Ms. Rice saying that um. I do hold the county accountable because of all the permits that are given. They continue to put utilities in, and I know Antoine is paying for it, although he says that he's not a developer. And I don't understand that, it's just a real mess. I would like to know if this board can work with Swift Mud to come to a solution, so that at least we can grade the roads. So that they're passable, because it's really bad. And that's what I'm requesting, is that a solution come up, I know that the infrastructure is a problem. But we need, we need something quick, you know? I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Ms. Spence, are you next? You're eleven, is there a ten? Ten had to leave, you're it, thanks for being ready.
Good afternoon, Deb Spence, Crystal River. Commissioner Davis, congratulations on taking over the helm and continuing in the realm of good government. There's a lot of work to be done, and I pray that there are positive accomplishments this year.
Did you see how many times I wanted to give the job back today? Okay, just checking.
I, I do love the idea, and this meeting has gone very, very well, and I'm very um, happy to see that it's very collegial today. Um, I will make as a general note that bullying uh, at this meeting with zingers and gotchas is not leadership, and it's not government. And I hope that I don't see much more of it, I have seen some of it in video, and this county deserves a lot better than that. I wanted to come to the meeting last time and speak on the immigration resolution, but I couldn't bring myself to come down here. My absence from many of these meetings this year was due to the death of our daughter at the age of fifty from pancreatic cancer. And sometimes the BS in this meeting is just way too much. On immigration, that I could not be here for, I keep hearing that we need to put Christ back in Christmas, and I think we should put Christ back in Christians. At our gospel reading last week, Jesus was asked, when did we, when did we see you hungry and not give you food, or thirsty and not give you drink? And I'll come back to the immigration issue. When we ignore immigrants, when we say that they're not allowed here, um, then we are ignoring what Jesus has taught us about being available to others. Commissioner Finnegan, you spoke with me the other day, and one of the things you said to me was that the immigration resolution was not political. And I don't know if you think that I'm stupid, but that was totally political. There is a, a private Republican group in the county that put that forward. And the, and the members of this committee voted for it, and I think that it was a shame that we wasted time on that one issue. There's a wide divide in this county with the haves and the have-nots. We have students homeless and sleeping in cars while we build Mc- McMansions. Citizens are really hurting with little acknowledgement for their local concerns about electrical costs, taxes, housing, growth. Mental health, inpatient services, Baker Act facility, road paving, insurance, leadership is needed, not followers who will divide this county even more. People in this county are upset, problems in growth have been escalating for decades, and the growth we're seeing has been broadcast all this time. Sun Coast Parkway Extension has seventy-five connections, if you build it, they will come. Now people see that over the decades last of involvement by this board, investors brought up private land that are now ready to sell it for profit. Zoning laws were created many years ago, may no longer serve the county. A decade ago, this county promoted tourism. And now we are looking at all the infrastructure that's needed to go with that, people are angry, and rightfully so. But one thing that I did wanna mention today is about the Republican Party. And you all know that there is over sixty, over fifty percent of this county is Republican. And I'm very upset to find out that Moms for Liberty, that was here and was promoting banning books. Is now involved in doing the deed of what we cannot read about in this county. And I have heard nothing from the Republican Party about anything to do with that. And I would ask that there be some type of acknowledgement that the Republican Party has lost part of their moral compass, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spence. Do we have a twelve, or did twelve go, twelve went away, okay? All right, um, Inverness Villages Four, I agree that common sense would say that um, we should not have issued permits. However, we are barred from holding a permit for lack of another permit. This board is currently um. Doing that and risking lawsuits because of that. We are ignoring the law because we just, and the last board was not willing to do that. So we are not complicit, we do not do roads and drainage unless the roads and drainage are paid for. And so um, it's an unfor- it is a hot mess. And if Commissioner Baze is already taking the lead on so many things on this board, if she can find some miracle. Cure that I haven't figured out in two and a half years of working on this, then I have no ego in it, more power to her. I will say that there does appear to be an organized scheme to defraud, and if you don't have a private attorney yet, you should. Um, and I am going, I am in touch with the Attorney General's Office to put that charge forward. DEP has already filed uh, an injunction against them, um, using the term common scheme of adult development, because he is a developer that's not a developer. FWC is pursuing the same line. And I believe Swift Mud is also looking at that, you know, every one, all the agencies involved are looking at common scheme of development. To try to hold the correct parties responsible. There are three, currently only one of them is feeling any pain, um, and that is Vanderwijk. But the original um. Ben Yuzen that owned the property was quoted in the um, Action News, ABC Action News article from last week. As saying, I don't know what I did wrong. So uh, it is a hot mess, we will continue to go forward, but don't blame us, we've already won a lawsuit based on it. We did not, our hands were tied, I know you hate, I can't believe I just let that left my mouth, cause you guys had told me not to say that. But um, this board, this current board did take action to stop permits. And um, yes.
Trying to get your attention.
Yes, ma'am.
The new procedure, so I know it's different than it was. After we call numbers, we then want to open it up to the public that didn't arrive early.
Okay, then anybody else like to speak? You already spoke at the first time. There's a second open to the public at the end, believe it or not, this is a little bit, speaking of hot messes, today's been a bit of a hot mess on the agenda. And to Janet's point, we oughta look, I don't know if there's any reason we can't put time certens on the agenda prior to open to the public. Just to get that out of the way. Good, and would anybody else who's not spoken yet?
I think the code says otherwise.
The code says we can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Dang hot mix, okay, um, so that's all the feedback I have, um, board, do you have any comments? Ms. Sherf Finnegan?
For the people, oh, sorry, for the people that were speaking on behalf of the Brentwood issue. I know that, I think you had alluded that staff will help you, I don't know if it's Steve, if you're appointing Eric or who you're appointing, but maybe. Um, because we don't know when they'll leave, that a business card or something could be passed.
Yeah, Eric.
Just so that I'm sitting here all day and don't know who they're getting connected to.
They're taking care of it.
Somebody could connect to them.
We got it.
Janet, I, I think that we'll get there with the numbers, it was my idea actually to call names, numbers are fine. I think that will help, some people can't stand there, and sometimes it, it goes on for a very long time, I'm, I'm happy that. Also, if there's, you know, some days, you've been here thirty or fifty people in line, if you're number forty-nine, and you have to use the ladies' room. You know when you have time, so I, I, I think numbers uh, will work. You took care of Ivy Four. Um, you took care of IV four. Um, and. I won't, well, I will say to to Mr. Schwartz's point, I know that we probably don't want to make habit. Um, especially for Madam Attorney, for everyone, every time before there's quasi judicial, but he didn't, like, people email us. Before all the time, so I don't know how we handle that, but if there's some. I don't know after I'm done if you want to clarify that, if you have some legalese behind that, but. Peo- people tell us things in in a public meeting all the time. Uh, I'm not going to comment on on what you said, of course, and um. Deb Spence, I, you know, you asked me questions and I nicely answered. I'm okay that we disagree, because like I said, I think. Both of our hearts are in a nice place. You want to help a lot of people. I dedicated my entire adult life to social service, so. Uh, my heart, my heart is there to help people. Um, you have five. Excuse me, four sitting here that are Republicans, and I know you're not happy. With things in that party, and I'm sure some people aren't either, but that's not a party thing. That's a human thing. I don't know that uh. One party's values have decayed. I think some human beings' values may have decayed and not have been what they've put forward and. And I guess those people will have to answer for that, not not an entire group. And that's about it.
Ms. Sherbinnigan, do you have anything?
I'll just make a comment regarding the speed limit. Apparently, Mr. Bates doesn't like me because he never asked for comments from me. I'm joking. He's sitting over here and he still doesn't hear me. Um, I did not just arbitrarily say, oh, I think we should reduce the speed limit. I told kind of a story. We talked about development. We talked about the number of curb cuts that's going on with all the development. And then I also discussed a report that came out of the NPO about safety measures, and it ranked us from one to five in various categories. And it was just merely a suggestion that maybe we should look at it. Never said we should. I followed up with the Sheriff's Department. I asked for some numbers, but. I can't control what gets written in the paper, and I can't control what happens, what you hear, what you don't hear. But that's the fact of the matter, is I gave a lot of background, a lot of detail about it, but the rest of the story was not told. There was not a complete story, so I know we read a lot about it. And somewhere it just got lost in the uh. The rest of the story got lost. Um, I do have a question about IV four.
Yes, ma'am.
Can the roads be graded so that they're passable?
I believe that our Public Works Department posed that question to Swift Mud at some point um. Without going into the details, because I don't have it right before me, I believe that the answer from Swift Mud was no.
Okay.
But if anybody from Public Works knows differently, they can. I'm getting a nod from the Public Works Director that.
That that answer is correct? Okay, then you all can expect an email from me. I will be emailing because I would like, and I'm going to ta- I'm going to say in public, then I want to follow up with Swift Mud to tell us. Why we can't grade roads to make them passable. I mean, when you, when I drive out there and I look around and there's obviously gaps in the road where things are happening, washouts. I don't understand why Swift Mud would prevent us from at least grading a pass, making the road passable.
I I believe that the issue is that there are many places where there are no roads. There are simply rights of way, and there's a distinction between a right of way and a road. Alley street. A road alley street is something that has been constructed. In Inverness Villages Four, there are right of ways. And s- a right of way is simply a location on earth where the public is allowed to travel. It doesn't mean there's pavement. It doesn't mean there's concrete. It just means there is a space. On this earth where people can travel. There's an identified, there's many identified spaces within Inverness Villages Four that the public can travel, but there are no constructed. Streets, and I think Swift Mud, perhaps they might tell you something different, but I believe that it's grounded in that theory that. There are no streets. There are simply rights of way.
All right.
And that gets the quizzical looks from so many.
Is there anything further? E one?
Motion approved, E one, A through E.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, uh, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E one? Seeing none? All the, any board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion to approve E two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment? On E two? Is there any board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion approve item E three.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion to approve E four.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Is there any board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion to approve E five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Is there any board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion to approve E six.
Second.
Ooh, we have a new entry.
You all were on a roll down there. I just thought I'd let you.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Bayes. Is there any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion to approve E seven.
Motion by Commissioner Bayes, second by Commissioner Finnegan. I'm just going to call it. It was a tie. Is there any public comment? Is there any board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Motion to deny E eight and nine.
Second.
I said motion to deny.
What's that?
She said motion to deny.
Oh, I thought she said E eight and nine. I'm like, yeah, knock them out two at a time.
I know that you're.
Oh, no, I'm not going to second.
I will second it for the sake of discussion, because I want to hear what Commissioner Bayes has to say.
Well, I'm a little perplexed. I reviewed last year the agreement um with the Sheriff's Office and Fire Dispatch and the EMS Dispatch. And we um. Got this new contract, and in there there was maintenance, and we've been paying them. And now, all of a sudden, we have a thirty thousand dollar plus um. Increase for both of these, and I I'm. I just would like more information before we go down this road. I I don't underst- I mean, I feel like we keep paying and paying and paying and. Um, again, it goes back to us, a partnership and working together, and you're just changing pockets.
Chief, would you mind coming up?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Isn't this Chief Stevens that brought it forward?
Yes.
Comes out of his budget.
Well, he, she has questions. I figure he's the one that's most appropriate to answer, right? Am I doing something wrong in your house?
No, not at all.
All right.
So I believe the uh conversation that I had with uh Colonel. Brar was the fact that the Personnel Services have increased because they increased the wages for the personnel in Dispatch. There's also a slight increase in the uh T-one lines and a slight increase in the um. CAD maintenance. And we do have people in from Dispatch here, uh Mike Story, the supervisor, and Troy, or Captain Hess.
So again, last year, when I looked at this contract, it had maintenance built into it. So that the maintenance has gone up? I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
There's four people.
Uh, I believe there's an increase in the maintenance and. I'd have to look at the previous contract to give you that number. I think I actually have it. If you hold on one second.
They're coming up.
Hello, um, Mike Story, I'm the Communications Manager for the Sheriff's Office. So the increase for the software, for somebody that weren't aware, the last two to three years, we've gone through. An upgrade in our CAD system and our T-one lines. They were both grants that the board approved, and so. With that new. Programs, the maintenance agreements increased, so they were. Essentially, um.
They caused the.
They caused the increase. So they they were all increases that we, the board was aware of previous because of the 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 new grants. The new CAD system, the new.
But wasn't it a multi-year contract that was li- line item by line item?
Yes, and each each year it has a breakdown of the increase. There was an increase for each year.
And you're okay with this, Captain? Chief?
They they, we contracted with them for dispatch services, and I need that service to continue. Um, we need to obviously um look at different means of doing this or having a discussion with the sheriff moving forward. I have no problem with that.
Again, this is another one of those services that we're trading pockets. So. I'm ready to peel the Band-Aid off and start looking at everything.
And just to clarify, the the CAD system and the T-one lines, the radio system, those are systems that are owned by the county, utilized by all. Services.
I know.
So it's not the Sheriff's Office who's telling you this increase has to be. This is the providers that. Whether the sheriff had it or the county had it, this is the cost of those systems.
But we're paying this back to the sheriff.
E- even if you had the systems under you, you would be paying the same, so.
All right. I'll I'll withdraw my motion and approve it, but I I do, I want, I want to look at this.
Motion approve item E eight.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, yes.
Was the second withdrawn?
Uh, yes, sorry. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Any further board discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries in, or zero, and so unanimously.
Motion to approve E nine.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Any board discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Rebecca, did you?
No, I said I.
Okay, I didn't hear him. Um. Uh, mission passes four zero. E eleven.
Motion approve E eleven.
I'm going to second it, but I want to have some discussion about this.
Okay, we have a mission by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment? Come on it.
Janet Barrett from Citrus Springs. Cora Civic is our jail people, our county jail people, that are always behind on. The number of people they have watching our inmates. Is there a specific number of personnel that they will be having watch just the people from the Virgin Islands? And are they meeting that quota? Or are they going to be paying for not having enough people to watch the people from the Virgin Islands? If so, I am going to ask again that you start looking for another corporation or entity. To possibly run our county jail.
Thank you, Janet. Mr. Howard, would you like to explain that we've already done that?
Yeah, we're gonna, we have to have some further discussions with them, actually this week, and we continue to have those discussions with them. So we hopeful that we'll bring a contract amendment forward in the future. It is complicated. Um, so I think we need to look at any and all options, obviously.
But my point was that I, um, you said, you told me that we have had other corporations come through, and it would increase. The poll from the general fund, so. The only reason that they come in as low as they do is because they have the USVI contract.
That's what I've been told from the past. I wasn't here in the past, uh, when they bid this out, but that's my understanding.
Yes.
It does lower the cost.
So it's um, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place here. Any board discussion? Yes?
Um, so to clarify, Mr. Howard, um, it wasn't recent. We haven't had recent companies that we've talked to. This was, uh, you just said previously when you weren't here.
Correct, correct. They're, I think they're under, I think you have a ten-year contract now, but that was when they previously bid, it's funny, when they bid it out, I wasn't here. Um, so that was my understanding that, um, I think they were the only, they were the sole bidder, I think, is what I was told. That came forward, and part of that, I think, was because of that. That's what I've been told.
I think actually Ms. Barrett has some very good questions about the number of staff that get dedicated to this, and I realize. That as long as they're a provider, that um. Well, I guess we don't have to, but they they need this as part of their contract, but they're not, in my eyes, they're not doing anything. To alleviate the problems that we have. People have died out there. Things aren't getting any better. Uh, we have all these drug overdoses out there. Drugs shouldn't be in there, but that uses our resources, so yeah. Uh, we might be saving some money. I don't know how much money that is on the front end. But on the back end, we have to spend all these extra resources to go out there for all the problems that they have. Um, I know people in the community are not happy with them. Our judges aren't happy with them. I'm not happy with them. Um. And every time I keep hearing we're getting closer and closer and closer, but nothing seems to happen, so um. Yeah, we need to do something about the jail, and I know that we're in a contract, but I don't know. I I would like to know how this board feels about it. I mean, if I'm the only one, you want to renew this contract and keep on keeping on, and you think that these negotiations are going to work. To the benefit of the citizens of Citrus County. I'll go along with that, but I I'm curious if any of you have the same concerns that I have.
We have three years left on the contract, is that correct?
Things longer than we here. Aaron might be able to tell us that, but uh, obviously you have, you know, three options. Uh, who you have now, you, at some point, put it out to bid, or you have it yourself. Um, so I mean, those are things you got to explore and look at, obviously. I've only been here about twelve months um to date, um, but those are things you look at, obviously. Going forward, but right now, we're in, we have a current contract that's in place. Um, part of the things we're into now with this contract amendment are really two issues. That are left, which we're going to have to look to the Florida jail model standards to look at. That's kind of where we're at right now with this, those two areas. Now, the other areas, I. I'm not, you know, talking about those areas, but that's what we're looking at right now, so.
Yes.
It just seems like they get this contract, and that's the real business for them. That's what I keep hearing. So they're using our facility for a money-making profit. Fine, because if you're in the business to make money, I completely understand that, but it seems like. We, the provider of this facility, so they can operate this other business out there, we're getting the short end of the stick, so they can. You know, have this really good business model for them. Somehow, we need to shore this up. Okay, if you want to have your business with the Virgin Islands, fine, but the county should be made whole. And I'm curious, the way you're curious, Ms. Barrett, you know, are, are the people going more to solve whatever stipulations are on their. Virgin Island contract and not so much on the county end? I I don't know, because I haven't looked over the contract, but I intend to. I just think that we're, we're getting. They're saying they can hire people, and at a time, I get it. I think we understood that. You know what? I I would be all for raising the penalty up to where we had it. We lowered it in hopes of good faith. They need this money, they need to recruit people, they need to get help. Um, it's gotta be the better part of a year that we lowered. The penalty for them to accomplish this and literally nothing has happened, nothing. So. If we can't do that today, maybe I will bring that up. Put that on the agenda under my name next time. We're gonna raise the rates, or at least I'm gonna ask for us to raise it back.
Madam Attorney. Um, is it in the contract that they have to provide the medical, the basic medical services that we were talking about?
Yes.
So, and they are not providing the basic medical services?
I believe that there's ongoing discussions about the medical services with Core Civic, but that is not.
But it is in the contract.
Yes.
So the contract as written, they should be performing at a much higher level and saving, because. You were saying earlier that they are taking, just sending prisoners off to what, the ER or? Whatnot, or no?
I I haven't been directly involved with the discussions with, um, Core Civic related to our. The the, those in custody that we're responsible for. Right now, you're talking about the Virgin Islands contract.
Yes.
But I I know that there are ongoing discussions about medical and some of the issues that, uh, have been raised is whether or not. It is appropriate to, um, have our, those that are county in custody. Sent to nursing homes rather than being treated at the jail. Yes, I I I know that those are ongoing discussions.
Um, I would be in favor of sending a message with higher fee, higher fines, going back to the old fines.
Uh, for your reference, I believe.
Nominally, I mean, we need to gel a little bit more, but.
The, it looks like the the fees were dropped in January of twenty twenty-three, so just about a year ago is when they were dropped. The, not fees, the the fines, the penalties.
Yes.
So it sounds like that's gonna be on the next agenda.
But we do need to approve this and move on, though. Yes. Oh.
In answer to Commissioner Finnegan's question, I believe there's eight years left on the, uh, seven or eight years left on the contract. But there is a six-month clause, there is a clause that, uh, either party can, uh, end the contract upon six months' notice.
Um, I didn't open it to the public yet, correct? Or did I?
I don't believe so.
Yes, Ms. Barrett spoke.
Oh, that's right.
I apologize.
Thank you. Um, any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Um, E twelve, A, B, C. Commissioner Canard, this is yours.
Yes, it is. Um, I'm I'll make the motion to approve item E twelve. A, B, and C, but I do have, uh, I do have some questions.
And B is actually provide staff direction, so. Oh, sorry. Can I have a second? Anyone?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Baze.
All right, so. Crystal River has, or right now, the county is holding, uh, impact fees for Crystal River. Uh, uh, in transportation, there's fifty-six thousand one ninety-one. And then park impact fees are seventeen thousand eight seventy-six. What's that?
I'm s- I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I ask these questions. I have completely different numbers than you.
Hmm.
Hmm.
These are, uh, Crystal River specific, not District One. If that makes a difference.
They're slightly off. Okay.
And, um. In District One, park impact fees, we have an additional nineteen thousand left there. Um. What concerns me about this, I'm I'm prepared to support it and, um. Utilize, uh, an additional one fifty-seven, hundred fifty-seven thousand out of District One transportation impact fees. Uh, to get them to the two hundred fifty thousand. Um, my concern is that this is for design. And what's gonna happen when it comes to construction? Uh, are they, are they coming back for construction dollars to us? Or is Crystal River gonna fund that? Or where are those construction dollars coming from? Um. I had wondered if this segment, um. Was part of the trail that would connect La Groen Park to four eighty-six forty-four intersection. But my understanding is that it's, that it's not. Um, it's, it would be in addition to, uh, that, uh. Just based on on memory from individual, uh, staff member I spoke with. Uh, that he believed that, uh, that the second phase of that trail from La Groen Park to four eighty-six. Uh, went due east of, um, of La Groen Park. And that was the segment that, uh, that DOT would consider. Provided that the county and city got the first phase of it done, getting Three Sister Springs Trail to La Groen Park. Uh, but completing this section going due north. Uh, from La Groen Park up to, um, uh, Copeland Park. Certainly, um, merits consideration because of, um. Uh, safety factor of having kids walking right down, uh, right down the road there. I I don't, is is that Fifth Avenue? Is it? Uh, kids walking down Eighth, kids walking down Eighth, uh, to get from. Uh, actually forty-four, where there's a traffic light now. Uh, walking down the road to get down to La Groen Park through where there's a YMCA and so forth. So I think, uh, from a safety standpoint, I think it merits consideration. And, um, and I, I, like I said, I I can, I can find the money in in impact fees, uh, both in. Crystal River specific and District One impact fees. Without getting into the rest of the county impact fees or county-wide park impact fees pots. Where I think there's other projects, uh, that we need to look at for those in the county proper rather than within, uh, city limits. So, that's why I would support this. Uh, I hope that the board will. And, uh, I'd be interested to hear what, um, uh, what city manager has to say the plan is for construction.
Yes, Commissioner Finnegan.
Uh, I think that, um, I could definitely support it. I just wanna make sure we get the numbers where the money's coming from, correct? So I'm a little off with you on the money that's being held for Crystal River transportation money. I was told yesterday fifty-six thousand four thirty-seven. You had another number for Crystal River for something else. I don't have that, but I have District One only. Park money, thirty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-five. So.
Yeah, that in, that number, that thirty-seven thousand number includes seventeen thousand eight seventy-six. That is Crystal River specific.
Understood. Okay, so the numbers are basically the same.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, the number that I used, the nineteen thousand was just. A rough, rough estimate of what's left over.
And the balance is coming from what pot of money?
The District One, uh, transportation impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
Again, just. The rest was park fees, yes.
What's that?
The rest was park impact?
Uh, park impact fees are seventeen thousand eight seventy-six that are being held on behalf of the city. And then, um, nineteen thousand in park impact fees from District One.
So that's thirty-six thousand total? In park impact fees?
Yep, thirty-seven.
Two fifty-five?
Thirty-seven, two fifty-five?
Yep.
And then, um, but we're trying to get to two fifty, so you're suggesting that the balance to get to two fifty comes out of transportation impact fees?
Well, the county's holding fifty-six thousand one ninety-one for Crystal River.
Mm-hmm.
So you would use that. And then the balance remaining to get to two fifty would come out of District One transportation impact fees.
Okay. Mr. Baber?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna speak this morning, afternoon, too. Been here for a while, too. Um, just to be clear, sir, uh, that's com- total cost for the project, including design and construction. The city's already taking care of the design portion of that trail. We're talking about a two hundred and fifty-foot sidewalk, um, going down and then across mid-brock crossing, so. Um, it's all-inclusive. We designed it with Kimley Horn. Um, it's shovel-ready if you're looking for projects that are ready to go. Uh, as you mentioned earlier, the amount of pedestrian traffic on that, uh, road is growing daily. Uh, but the Boys and Girls Club going between there and there's actually a pavilion down at at Copeland Park, which gives them basketball courts that we just resurfaced. Uh, we probably put approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of, uh, funds into Copeland Park, into that area. Uh, don't forget, uh, part of that sidewalk will include like a complete street project. Where we include street trees and, uh, areas for people to walk to add shade, also improve property values in that area as well, so. Uh, that is the total cost, anything barring, uh, future, uh, uh, above and beyond of that, the City of Crystal River will own that cost. We have budgeted for any extra overages should we need.
Thank you for that early, that nice news for a Christmas present. That was lovely. Did you introduce yourself at the beginning for the record?
I apologize. Uh, my name's Doug Baber. I'm the city manager for the City of Crystal River.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Baber, how how long is the the project, do you know?
It's about two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay. And so two, two hundred and fifty thousand covers everything?
This 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 dollar figure will cover it all, and if there's any overages, the City of Crystal River will cover that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
One last comment. Mr. Babers, when it comes time to conduct, uh, construct the trail from Three Sister Springs to get to La Groen Park. We may need some participation from the city, so we'll be looking forward to that partnership discussion.
Yes, sir. I think I've, uh, committed myself to help any way I can with the county commission, and I misspoke. It's two thousand of linear feet, uh, of sidewalk. I apologize for that number. I was thinking about the two hundred and fifty thousand. Sorry about that, but it is.
I thought the number was a little off, thank you.
Yeah, it's a dollar a foot or something like that.
I'm like, dang.
Right, so I I apologize for that. It is two thousand linear feet.
Yeah, very.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Anything else?
Did I already do open to the public? I think I'm getting, I need coffee or something. I'm not tracking this very well. Did we do open to the public? Did we? Do you open to the public yet on this?
No.
Okay. Um, would anybody like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Great, thank you.
E thirteen.
Make a motion approve E thirteen, but I've got, um, I've got one quick question on that one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment? Seeing none, go for it, Commissioner Canard.
Madam Chair, do we know what the, uh, last year's rate was in reimbursement?
Aaron?
Same? Perfect.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'm okay with the approval of the standard state cents per mile for travel. I cannot approve the reasonable fixed monthly mileage allowances for in-county travel. Um, I said that before. Um, I think that in-county travel is part of the job. And I don't think that we should be taking that pot of money for a fixed monthly rate just to add into salaries. So for that reason, I'm not going to approve this.
Okay. Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three one. Okay, E fourteen.
Motion approve, E fourteen, A and B.
Second.
Woo-hoo. Uh, motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment on E fourteen? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. E fifteen.
Motion approve, E fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Canard, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public discussion? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. F, Mr. Howard?
Yes, the, uh, Betts Farm update due diligence process is in progress. Also, I skipped number nine. The comprehensive plan amendment coastal hazard area has been completed. That's all.
Excellent. Already done all of our Hs. We've got nothing under I. J. Commissioner Canard, anything?
No.
Commissioner Finnegan?
No.
Commissioner Baze?
No.
I have a whole ton of them, but after today, so I have nothing either. Um, let's see. That would be Commissioner Canard, L one.
Yes, thank you for rifling right through those things, 'cause the gentleman's name from the National Weather Service has slipped my mind at this point. What was it? Brian. Um, I had a, thank you, Doug. You saved the day again. Um, I had a, uh, going back, I I guess, a couple months now. I had a great, um, video conference with, um, uh, with this gentleman from the National Weather Service. Uh, I believe he is actually the director of the Tampa location. And, um, we walked through a number of different graphics on the last couple storms to threaten our area. Last one that, um, uh, that struck north of us. Um, and he he went through some numbers, the, you know, the shift in these storms. And the potential impact, if it doesn't shift, that type of thing. Great conversation. He invited me down. Um, uh, to come down to a, um, a conference that they have in the spring. For, uh, emergency management, uh, planners, personnel, all that type of stuff. Which I said that I I would love to go down there and see that. But then he also offered, you know, I I told him, I said, look, my comments came out of, um. Comments made at the podium that, uh, these, y- you know, these evacuation orders are issued. And a fraction of the people listen to them. Uh, very small fraction of people leave. The rest decide to stay, quite frankly, because they don't believe it. And so, um, I don't believe that he took offense to that and he said, here's why we issue these things. And again, had had quite a number of tools that he walked through. But anyhow, he said, you know, obviously, our goal is to try and increase the public awareness. And how to get more people to buy into, this is the best forecast that we can, uh, put out there publicly. And, uh, better educate the folks and try and get greater, uh, participation in an evacuation. Because in the event that it doesn't have that little shift while it's still, you know, well south of the Florida peninsula. Um, then we're we're right in the strike zone. Uh, so what he, uh, what he offered to do was one of two things. He said, he said, I can come up there. And bring these tools. I can do it in person, or we can do it virtually. Uh, we'll have a workshop and educate everybody at one time. Uh, get the papers, participation, to invite the public to come and see what's going on. And, uh, hopefully, in the event that the next storm comes, more people have bought into. The tools that that they're using to make these, uh, to make these forecasts and these decisions to get people to evacuate. Uh, I told him that it would be, that it would be very welcome, uh, to do something like that. If it had to be virtual, that would be fine, but otherwise, I felt like we would get greater public participation, uh, if he could come up. If it had to be virtual, that would be fine, but otherwise I felt like we would get greater public participation uh if he could come up. Uh somebody with his credentials to be right here in front of us, in front of the public and demonstrating the reason why they make these calls. So anyway, my um uh my request to the board, and I don't know, I don't know that we necessarily have to uh vote on it today. Uh but my request to the board is is if everybody's okay with it, let's let's move forward. Now, they weren't, he wasn't sure exactly the date of the conference that they were having down there. He said it was in the spring. But um he said, once we know that specific date, let's see if we can set up that workshop and invite people in. So if the board is is agreeable to that, I think it'd be a good idea.
I think it's an outstanding idea. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Man, I wish you had interrupted me and we could have saved a lot of time. No, no, thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Just to add on to that, um there is some legislation that's being proposed this year that um would make an amendment to a state statute to allow for uh emergency briefings in public for public meeting exemptions, which I think makes total sense. I hate the fact that, you know, you've got five commissioners, you're all working for the benefit of your citizens, and you're not supposed to be in a room at the same time being briefed, which is absolutely ridiculous.
Right.
So that is going through the legislature this year. I I can't see why they wouldn't pass that. I think it's a great idea and.
Hang on just a second. Sir, did we, staff, did you get a card to him, someone? You did? Okay, good. Sorry.
Very good.
You got one as well? Nope. This this couple needs some too.
Very good. All right. So as soon as um uh I'll get back with him and then uh as soon as we know the date uh that he is obligated to be down there, and I had told him that I would be there as well. Uh then we'll get a we'll get a date set up uh to get this workshop scheduled. I'll bring that back as an agenda item with a specific date.
Super.
Fair enough.
Look forward to it.
All right, very good.
On, you've got the next one too.
All right. So uh pretty pretty simple.
Interrupt you and say yes.
Uh how about if I just make a motion then that uh we've we've got reserved parking spots right out here? It doesn't seem to make any sense to me that we've got reserved spots over there, so I'm gonna make a motion that we take those those signs down and we no longer need those reserved spots.
Second.
Perfect.
Okay. Motion uh by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right, um. I need to look at my backup.
O one.
Yes, I know. I'm just don't have the backup in front of me. Um is there any discussion or consensus on this, or well, should I just make a motion?
Motion to approve O one.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. O two, I would like to um nominate retired Judge Mark Yerman to serve as the alternate member.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. Yes, ma'am, you're giving me a look.
I did not hear that full recommendation. Can you repeat that, please?
I would like to make a motion that we um that we appoint retired Judge Mark Yerman to serve as the alternate member on the Citrus County Camastine Board. All right. Anybody like to speak on this from the public? Seeing none. Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. And looky here, we're at open to the public again. Would anybody like to speak for the second open to the public before we close the meeting?
I have nothing.
Oh, did I blow right by you?
I probably said enough today.
Well, you only got in trouble with Kennard once. It's a good day for you. I did blow right by you. I'm so sorry. Nice snark, though. Oh, she's got a, she's got bling now. Awesome. Are you gonna sing too?
Janet Barrick from Citrus Springs. I would like to suggest again that we go backwards in history with the Board of County Commissioner agenda meetings. And at three o'clock, you take a ten-minute break. It won't kill you. In fact, it might give you a little bit more brain activity, because you'll be able to focus. All right, so as of twenty twenty-three, as as it's ending, I'm wishing all of you a Merry Christmas. There you go. I have a card for each of you. I did not mail them since postage has also gone up. I needed to cut down on my expenses.
Janet, is that our fault too? The postage went up just asking for a friend?
I need to cut down on my expenses due to rising costs. My three-point-two percent cola raise is not going to help, you know, with the cost on food and gas and insurance. That means health insurance. That means car insurance. It means homeowner's insurance, so that's not your fault, you know. Okay? Okay, along with the property taxes. Well, may everyone enjoy a well-needed time off with family and friends. And I will see you all in twenty twenty-four. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Janet. Merry Christmas.
Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge. Commissioners, you will be listening to the passionate residents as to why you should vote no to the proposal for the golf course. There is also the legal side. Mr. Dix's attorney at the planning board stated there have been several changes to the public offering statement and master plan over the years. I have never seen or heard of any other public offering statement or master plan revisions. Mr. Dix or his attorney have the burden of proof to submit and update copies if they exist. He claims they exist, but does not, does anyone have a copy of any and all updated documents which he speaks about? They should have been submitted as evidence by the moving or petitioning party at the planning board hearing. So you could review them as well as the residents of Pine Ridge. The original was filed with the county and, in my case, the state of New York in nineteen seventy-two and revised in nineteen seventy-three. By law, all updated public offering statements and master plans should have been supplied to New York and myself prior to me receiving my warranty deed on about December eighth, nineteen eighty-two. If there are no new documents before you, then it is your fiduciary responsibility to honor only one before you dated February twenty-third, nineteen seventy-two and revised in June nineteen seventy-three. In my possession, I have the original offering statement, which a copy was supply, will be supplied to the commissioners as evidence describing how the land encompassed Pine Ridge was to be used. It lists the five estates within Pine Ridge, one being the Country Club Estates. Part five states, approximately two hundred and twenty-two acres, have been set aside for a golf course to be located in the Country Club Estates. The golf course is protected by your own governing documents found in the Land Development Code. In addition, Mr. James Arthur informed you by letter that the LDC passed a putt amendment that was not in accordance with Citrus County Code on the chapter four, section forty-three oh two. And I hope you will look into this in the future. For the foregoing reasons, I request, as a Pine Ridge resident, that you vote no to this proposal and ensure that the golf course remains, as stated, in the public offering, the Pine Ridge Master Plan, and guaranteed by the LDC. I would like to know how a public auction with se- with several bidders was canceled and Mr. Dix quietly, behind closed doors, purchased the golf course.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Is this a new thing? Anyway, I will give these documents to Doug. And appreciate time. Thank you, so that they're at the meeting, which I won't be at.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else to speak or open to the public?
Almost. Good evening. I would remiss if I just stay quiet. But I invite the commission to.
State your name for the record. We know who you are, but yes.
Orlando Rodriguez. I'm the warden at the Citrus County Detention Facility. I've been the warden there for the last sixteen months. I'm a thirty-three-year veteran of corrections. And you all know what I inherited when I took the reins of the facility. Today, we have a facility that went through two Florida Model J standards this year, one of which wasn't announced on it with no findings. We have a facility that got reaccredited by the American Correctional Association for the next three years in the month of August. We have increased our staffing significantly. We still have twenty vacancies. Corrections is very challenging. I will tell you this, I hear uh hear this recently from the deputy chief of Pasco County Jail while he was addressing a class of new graduates. He said, and he addressed the graduates and the family members. He said, you have chosen a career that when everything goes good at the jail, nobody cares about the jail. But when one incident happens, there's a big uproar. We have challenges every day. We deal with offenders every day. We don't know who's gonna come through our doors and we deal with them. We have excellent staff, dedicated staff. As far as the Virgin Islands, this is a a partnership with the county. Uh I'm not a numbers person, but the county actually gains approximately two-point-five million dollars a year from our partnership between the county and the Virgin Islands. And also with the marshal service is the same. Uh I'm here, I came here to save this facility. We have done all the work. That there are issues, just their issues. My doors and my phone number is always available for you, for the judges, for the community. I'm not heading in the jail. I want to be a member of the of the public, be there for you. But come and visit our jail. You know, you do not realize how successful this facility is. The latest comment or the comment from the last auditor that came to the facility, he came from Polk County. And he told me, Warden, I have never audited a privately privately managed facility. But I'm completely surprised and impressed by the quality of operations, the sanitation of this facility, and the prof- professionalism of the staff. Don't make, and this is me making a plea, don't make a decision without actually touring the facility. I know, you know, you, we have, there's high-level meetings with with Core Civic, with the corporate folks. But you know, I'm in the front lines every day. And I have a hundred sixty staff members that work together every day to make the jail and a a better place for our inmates. Come and visit us. Uh we have a twenty-eight-year relationship with the county. And we want this relationship to continue. So that's my open invitation.
Thank you. And um one question, though. Who makes the decision on getting the hires up to where the you would be within contract? Is it Core Civic Management, or is it you? Who who funds that?
I know there's there's a um a meeting tomorrow uh with some Core Civic, Core Civic Management. Uh but the person who you need to reach out to is me.
Okay.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan?
I know you say you're not a numbers guy, but since you mentioned the numbers, and I'll have to verify with Aaron. You said that the county benefits two-point-five million dollars from the contract with the Virgin Islands. Um so I asked yesterday how much money we get, and it was seven dollars and something per inmate. But you all get, was it seventy-seven, or was it like eighty, ninety?
Well, that's that's our, that's.
My point is, excuse me, my point is, if we're getting two-point-five million, holy cow, on seven dollars? And you're ten times that amount? Hire some people. You have plenty of money.
Well, uh Commissioner, with all due respect, when we establish a per diem, that includes the services we're going to provide this image, which is medical services, food service, and and a transportation. So it's not that we are earning seventy-seven dollars, for example.
I I understand that, but I also understand business. You're not giving the county seven dollars if you're not getting that or a lot more.
Well, like I said, you know, my invitation to you, come and visit us. And um I know you're very busy. You have other issues to deal with uh in the county. Uh my responsibility is for you not to have those issues as far as a jail, but you, I'm welcome, I'm opening the door, come and visit us, you know, uh because I think the staff will will love to see you there and tour to render our building. Because we take pride in what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. Commissioner Bays, do you have any comments about anything? Commissioner Kennard? Anything further, Mr. Finnegan? All right. Okay, upcoming meetings. We have a regular meeting on um Tuesday, January ninth, here at one P M. Monday, January twenty-second, here at one P M. It's gonna be a very confusing week for me, being here Monday. February sixth, which is also a Tuesday at one P M here. Um upcoming workshops and special meetings, we have a strategic planning retreat on Thursday, January eighteenth. That would be at the Locanto Government Building, room one six six, and that starts at nine A M. And with that, we are adjourned.